I will call to order a meeting of the Wilsonville City Council for a work session on Monday, July 18th at 5:04 PM. Then we'll start with review of agenda and items on consent. Do councilors have any comments? Okay. Any councillor concerns?
No.
Okay. Then we'll move right into the pre-council work session, starting with the discussion on construction excise tax for affordable housing with Mr. Lorenzen.
All right. Good evening. So, we're here to talk about construction excise tax for affordable housing. You have a staff report, you have a memo, and you have some financial forecasting scenarios. And if you have those available throughout the presentation, that may prove helpful. So, I want to first touch on why we're discussing this. The council set goals for the biennium 2021 to '23, and one of those goals, 3.1, reads that the council should continue the implementation of the city's equitable housing strategic plan and explore funding options, including a construction excise tax. 3.2 continues that the council should explore examples of other programs to support home ownership for low-income residents and first-time homebuyers as part of the Frog Pond East and South Master Plan. Similarly, the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan has findings in it that suggest that CET may be a tool that Wilsonville may add to the toolbox for realizing equitable housing throughout the city. Some of those findings are included on the screen, namely, the city is growing, and certain segments of the city are growing in particular, both geographically and demographically. We also learn in some of the data in the equitable housing plan that 1 in 10 households in Wilsonville currently lives in a subsidized unit, something that may surprise some, and that the average home in Wilsonville costs 31% more than the average household can afford. So, we're well aware of the documented need for more workforce and affordable housing throughout the city. The plan has implementation actions that help us to move toward equitable housing in the city. Under 1, 1E specifically mentions the creation, or at least envisions, that someone in the city holds this position of city liaison to work on housing-related issues. And then there are a number of other items under number 2, to secure land, to look at other strategies, including tax abatements, home repair programs, and structuring of SDCs to facilitate the development of affordable housing. These are all items and positions that have a cost associated with them, and so it begs the question of where the revenue may come from. And so thus, discussion of a construction excise tax, which has the power, of course, to create that revenue. I mentioned the Frog Pond East and South Master Plan. Of course, Dan Pauly is going to be following me to talk with you more about the development of that master plan. The council has expressed a lot of interest in seeing diverse housing types in this area and various levels of affordability, particularly the opportunity to own a home for those wishing to do so. And again, this CET is one way to help move those goals forward. Another reason we're talking about this right now is the revenues that we realize, and we're going to get into this in the forecasting section of my report, but some might say, well, the amount of revenue that's forecasted annually is not really maybe that much. But as you're looking at the capital stack to complete an affordable housing project shown on the right under affordable project, these percentages are hypothetical, they're not meant to be exactly what a project might pan out to be, but the stack is the likely sources of funding that are required to complete an affordable project. And you see local incentive there noted in yellow. Oftentimes, in order to access, for example, state funds, or federal funds, or philanthropic funds, which are needed to complete that capital stack, investment from the local community is sort of a precursor. And so again, a CET is one way where the city may have funds at the ready to augment or enable us to have a local match to access these other sources of funding. I'll also note that in my conversations with local employers, this is anecdotal, I don't have hard evidence of this other than what I'm showing on the screen, transportation to and from work is a leading issue as employers seek to hire and retain their workforce. You can see graphically here that of Wilsonville's workforce, only 1,800 both live and work in Wilsonville. The rest is workforce exchange. People are leaving outside of Wilsonville for work, or similarly coming into Wilsonville for work. So this adds to congestion on the freeway, carbon emissions, other negative externalities. And so theoretically at least, as we add to workforce housing inventory in the city, we can move the needle hopefully at least incrementally toward reducing carbon emissions, freeway congestion, et cetera. So there are other positive externalities for workforce housing in the community. So let's define what we mean by affordable housing. This is sometimes challenging because there are so many definitions that exist out there. In our particular situation, we're talking about below-market rate housing. And I think keeping it at that basic level helps us have a conversation, at least at the stage we're at today, and it's a manageable way to think about it. But I do want to at least highlight two ways we can look at below-market rate. There's affordable housing in the sense that it's relatively affordable, that is relative to other housing stock and inventory in the city. And then there's what I'm trying to call absolutely affordable housing, and that's usually pegged to some percentage of area median income. And so as Dan talks to you a little bit later about a regulatory framework in Frog Pond, and as we think about that across the city, we can probably move towards relative affordability through our policies and our regulatory framework. But to get to a level of absolute affordability, 80% of area median income, 60% and below, this is where public contribution becomes necessary. It's just, as far as I know, very difficult, if not impossible, to get to absolute affordability through just regulation alone. So what is a CET exactly? This is a 1% tax. It's collected one time and one time only on the value, the building permit value. It's charged at the permit desk, and it would be collected at the same time as SDCs and other fees. But I just would like to note, it's not a 1% on your annual property tax bill, it's a one-time fee and one time only. It can be charged to residential projects, it can also be charged to commercial and industrial projects. And it's up to the council if we move forward down this path to talk about how those rates may be adjusted and/or divided between residential development and commercial and industrial. The state statute allows you that liberty. As you look at the memo that I provided, there's a section beginning on page 3, which takes a look at how the revenues from a construction excise tax are divided. You see 50% to developer incentives, then 35% to affordable housing programs and incentives in the city, and 15% to OHCS, that's the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department, that specifically go toward down payment assistance and first-time homebuyer programming. I'll note that even though those 15% of our revenue go to the state, those funds will come directly back to Wilsonville. So revenue generated in Wilsonville will not then fund a first-time homebuyer in Tigard, for example, it will only fund an opportunity in Wilsonville. For commercial and industrial construction, there's a lot more liberty in how those funds can be used. 50% are for specifically programs in the city related to housing, and that's really as specific as the statute gets. And then the remaining 50% are completely unrestricted. From a political standpoint, those would probably be used for something related to economic and community development, but there is no statutory restriction on those funds. So within those percentages that I just mentioned, how can the funds actually be spent? So when it comes to developer incentives, what we're talking about is waivers of permit fees or SDCs. And when we say waiver, I want to qualify that a little bit. Of course, when you waive a fee, it doesn't just go away, it creates a liability. And so a CET or equitable housing trust fund, whatever we end up calling this pot of money that the CET funds accumulate in, would backfill and help us to be able to cover that liability that we've created by waiving fees. Other ways that the city might use these funds would be to purchase property that could then be transferred to a developer of affordable housing. The city could theoretically provide gap financing and develop sort of any myriad of programs, especially those geared at areas of interest to the council, such as first-time home ownership programming. There is some specificity in statute, but not a lot for how these funds can be used. But it should be, of course, aimed at getting more folks at all income levels into homes that are below market. Here's my handy diagram that goes over what I just mentioned. Who pays and who doesn't? So again, this is an area where the council can decide, but there is state statute, and this is noted on the bottom of page four and the top of page five, certain projects can't be charged these fees. And there are the things that you might expect, education facilities, religious facilities, agricultural buildings, and so on. And then there's some precedent throughout the state so far of other types of projects that might also be excused from the fee. Affordable housing projects, for example, ADUs in certain instances, and then improvement projects that don't add square footage or don't reach a certain threshold of dollar value, so that someone who's just remodeling their kitchen, for example, is not going to have to pay the fee. This would only be charged against something that is adding additional square footage and additional assessed value to the tax rolls. What are the alternatives? I touched on this a moment ago, but there aren't a lot. The general fund is a way that some of these expenditures, these programs for affordable housing could be funded, but certainly there's a lot of other competing interests that are also vying for general fund dollars. A citywide bond measure to generate revenue from all taxpayers, specifically for affordable housing, would be another option, but as you can imagine, that might be politically challenging. And so outside those two, there aren't many that at least are being utilized in other jurisdictions to help create a fund specifically that will offset the costs of creating affordable housing in the city. There are some other jurisdictions that have already enacted a CET, and those are listed. I will note that there's one on the screen that is not in your report, and that is Tigard, who also adopted in 2019. Most of these programs are set up that they're collecting 1% on residential as well as commercial-industrial construction, with a few exceptions that you see noted. And so I think that leads us then into the revenue forecasting tables. How much could the city actually generate? And of course, this is a little bit of an art and a science to try and figure out, but without getting into the methodology now, I'd be happy to explain it if you want to go there in a moment, but have used what I think is a rational approach to trying to get our arms around an amount that we might be able to see on an annual basis. So there's four different scenarios. Admittedly, these are a little bit arbitrary in the way that they're set up, but there is some thinking behind them. So the blue boxes that you see are different rates that could be charged, some at 1%, some below, and so on. But this first one looks at a 0.8% on new single-family detached homes, and then nothing on additions and alterations, and then a 1.25% on commercial-industrial. So this is So this is, the thinking here, and this could have just as easily been 0.75 and 1.3, you know, there's a lot of ways this can move. But the idea, the philosophy here behind the way this is structured is to decrease the burden on residential and in a similar fashion, increase the burden on commercial and industrial. There's maybe a couple of reasons that you might take this approach. One would be that if you're trying to achieve housing affordability in the city, it might make sense to not add additional costs, or at least to minimize the additional costs to a housing permit pack. And then secondly, if you were to look at the, well, I guess you can, in the permit valuation column here, you can see the numbers, the millions of dollars of permit valuation that comes across the building department's desk, and a large portion of that, even greater than residential construction, is the commercial and industrial. They're the ones that are creating jobs. These are employees who need homes, and so from a philosophical standpoint, you might argue that commercial and industrial construction project might carry more of the burden. So under that scenario, we're looking at plus or minus $1 million of annual revenue. Scenario B considers the possibility of not taxing residential construction at all and just having commercial and industrial projects carry the burden, and in that case, you end up with $731,000 of revenue. Scenario C looks at an equitable distribution between residential and commercial at 0.8. Again, you're at 743. And then scenario D looks at having residential carry more of the burden and commercial a little bit less, with an annual amount of 834,000. So there are several levers we can pull if you choose to pursue this policy further and as we continue to explore it, but no matter how you pull the levers, we're probably going to land somewhere between 750 and $1 million of revenue annually. We should probably get some additional eyes on the forecasting to validate those figures, but that's what we're looking at as of today. So how would we proceed moving forward? To be clear, tonight, we're not talking about should we have a construction excise tax, yes or no. Simply asking the question if there's sufficient, uh, sufficient interest among council members to continue exploring this, to continue the conversation, to look at how a program might be structured, where the revenues might be collected in terms of what the percentage is and how it gets distributed between residential and commercial, and then looking at, as we move forward, how the funds would be expended. So there's a lot of further work to do, but tonight is not a yes/no. It's simply, is there interest to continue talking about this as a potential tool in the toolbox to realize the goals of the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan and the council goals at large? So I think I'll stop my presentation at this point and ask for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lorenzen. So I'd like to open it up for a discussion here, and I have a question for you. If you could please go to that slide that showed the, I think, the different forms of revenue, different sources of revenue for this, for infusing, I think one slide back. There you go. There it is. So the council unanimously adopted the equitable strategic plan, equitable strategic housing plan. It always has more words than people expect. In, I think that was 2019?
I want to say 2020.
2020, summer of 2020. And it was, I look at it quite a bit, it had a lot of, lot of options, a lot of statistics in it, and they came with these, with a lot of work to do after that was adopted. So that's part of what we're doing. We're doing some of that work right now, right? We're studying this, this construction excise tax that was listed as one of the possible options. And when we look at this bar that talks about the different forms of funding that could help make housing more affordable, do you know, I guess, I guess part of what we would do in this study, but looking at other cities around us, Tigard, Tuolleton, West Lynn, Lake Oswego, what forms of funding have they used besides the construction excise tax? And has it, you know, has it been along the lines that you're seeing right here? Like, do you know if anybody's, you know, the philanthropic element, for example, it's a pretty small bar, and state contribution?
Yeah, so I guess I'll just say again, the, the size of these bars on this bar graph are, are just for discussion purposes. They're not necessarily going to end up at these exact amounts, but, but yes, all of these different components would probably exist within an affordable housing project were it to be completed. You're, you're asking, how are other jurisdictions?
Do you have any examples, or maybe this is part of what we would do if we studied this further, is, is study how this has worked and how it is working in Oregon, for example? I would like to see some, in, I mean, I'm interested in studying this, basically, because I'd like to see how it works, because these are the choices that we have. Looks like we have people could borrow money to get affordable housing. Interest rates are up, and there's a limit to how much a person can borrow, of course, with housing rates going up, so that's not going to be the one solution. I just saw a big article by the state housing office this weekend where they are interested in having, I don't know if they're increasing the amount to help contribute to first-time homebuyers, but I'm interested in what kind of a dent that, those kinds of funds could make on an individual homebuyer's obligation to get into a house. And then, then the philanthropic angle would be like a Habitat for Humanity type of project. And I think it would be, in looking at the construction excise tax, I would like to see some real examples of how those other models have worked.
So if we, for example, looked at some recent affordable housing projects that have been completed in the metro area, and then, and then take a look at what their actual capital stack looks like?
Right.
Sure.
And then the other question I had was on the idea of the commercial, commercial and industrial application of that. How does that, can you talk about the effect of, you know, we're constantly working on ways to find additional funding to enable industrial development? Because the infrastructure is so expensive. So it seems like adding a percentage to new commercial and industrial, at least in some of the undeveloped areas, would be somewhat counterintuitive. Maybe it depends on where it is.
Yeah, and so these are all, I guess, levers that can be pulled and things that could be adjusted. Perhaps it applies in certain parts of the city or certain types of applications. Maybe it only applies, for example, to commercial and industrial alterations and additions and not to new construction. I mean, that's one way you could theoretically target it in areas where we're not trying to see new development occur.
Okay.
I don't know which button is my.
Oh, there it is.
Is that my button?
That's eight. You're the one to the right.
Well, because I also sent out.
Okay.
Yes, I was going to ask, of that list of cities that you had there, is that a, is that just a sampling? There are others, or is this pretty much it in Oregon?
I believe this is it. There's a possibility that there's been one or two jurisdictions that somehow have escaped my radar, but I believe this is an exhaustive list.
And, and then do we know if, if there are others who are in the same boat as us, which is, say, thinking about it, looking at it? Tuolleton is obviously missing there. It would seem like, it would seem odd to have Tigard and Wilsonville and then Tuolleton just not even thinking about it. So are there, are there others you know of that are considering it?
Off the top of my head, I don't, but I do know that the Oregon Housing Alliance, which is a nonprofit in the metro area, well, in the state, excuse me, they maintain a list of what you just described, who has enacted it, who is considering it, at what point, how far down path are they with that exploration? And so that's something that we could look into and bring to a subsequent meeting of what other jurisdictions are thinking about this.
And then does, has the Home Builders Association taken a position on this or not? Do they like it, they hate it?
I don't know if they've issued a formal position on it, but anecdotally, in my experience with, in my previous role before I was hired in Wilsonville, and from what I know from my peers and what they've shared with me, generally speaking, the HBA would oppose something like a construction excise tax.
Even though it might stimulate more building?
Right.
I mean, is that our, that's our goal here, I presume, is to stimulate more building, huh?
Would be to stimulate, I suppose, a very specific type of building.
Right.
I believe they did get Tigard. They, they bought in on theirs, and I don't know if, I think I heard that in our exec team meeting, but there was some give and take there, but they ultimately supported it. So that would be a conversation, I think, with them, is that if you want to move down this path, they would be an important stakeholder that we would reach out to.
I'll just add too, when I was at McMinnville, they adopted just very recently a CET, and the HBA there did not oppose it with some discussions of future actions that may be taken on some other fees that are incurred during construction.
It would be on this list now?
Yes, it, it just happened in April, March, yeah.
Any other comments about, or questions about this? And again, we're wanting your feedback on if we should study this further as one of the ways to achieve the goals of the unanimously-supported Equitable Housing Strategic Plan. Council, Lynn Bill? Oh, there's your button.
There's my button. So one of the things that I think, well, I will say that I, I guess I would concur that this is something for, in my opinion, that I would support us continuing to pursue, evaluate, and review. One of the things that I have a little bit of concern about is, given the statistics that you identified in the beginning of your presentation in terms of our population and the housing burden that our households currently have, I'm a little concerned that this, as you mentioned in your staff report, that the higher housing costs or higher rents might be passed on to either homebuyers or to renters. And I think we are already pretty high in terms of our housing costs, both in rental and in homeownership. So I do have some concerns about that as well, as we talk about residential. And then I think the other thing that I have concern about is anything that would be a disincentive to having builders choose to build here. I think the other side of it is, while I, while I probably would not support this if it was just going to be an affordable housing unit, a project, a housing development, I like the idea of having the flexibility of the council being able to develop policy around how the expenditures might be made that might support individual homeowners trying to acquire housing, as well as money that might be used to incentivize building, builders, both commercial and residential. So I think there are some benefits. I, I also recognize that it often takes money to get money, and so to be able to have a pot of money to be able to use as match for getting additional resources for housing, I think is a, is a, is a, is really beneficial for the city as well. So I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward to continue the discussion.
Go ahead.
I'm going to take a different position than the rest of the council. I, I don't know if I want us to go down this path right now in the current climate that we're facing economically and that people are dealing with, not just in the Portland area, but also all across the country. And I have the same concerns that the other councils have mentioned regarding it actually also increasing not only just commercial property, which can inhibit and make us less business-friendly, there's an additional tax that a neighboring jurisdiction does not have, where they can easily put their new business with living wage jobs, which I think living wage jobs are more of an indicator of better homeownership than a government tax program. So I don't like the idea of it hitting the commercial properties, and I just, I do have a concern initially about the potential increase in housing across the board. We also just passed, well, not all of Clackamas County, but the metro area passed a couple expensive housing bonds that increased property taxes just now for affordable housing, especially those on fixed incomes that hit them the hardest when it hits their property taxes. And they're being in a situation where they are saying, I can get the taxes to live in the house that I've been here for 40 years. So those are real issues that are, that our community deals with. So we've already had a lot of taxes for affordable housing, and so an additional local, another local layer tax on top of this, to me, is, just in today's climate, something I'm not, I don't know, that gives me pause.
Let me ask you a question, because we're trying to ask, should we study it?
Yeah, and I'm telling you why I might have reservations about studying it.
You're saying you don't want us to?
Yeah, I'm having my reservations and why.
Are about studying.
About studying it and going further, yeah. And my question, I have a question for you is, so if I have a home and I want to add a bonus room or another bedroom for grandma that's going to come move into the house, that, does that, do I now, as the homeowner, average Joe, have to pay this a tax? Does this, would this hit me also, or is it just like new construction?
The answer there is it depends on how you set it, we set it up locally. You could, you could set up, for example, a requirement that a permit value has to be at least $150,000 in order to incur the tax. Or you could say that the permit has to add new square footage, but in that instance, it would incur the tax. So the short answer is just it depends on how we set up the program locally. You could certainly exempt the things that you think should not be.
Is that normally living?
Also exclude EDUs, ADUs.
Okay. Is that normally like, living square footage? Like, someone bumps out and no one makes a single car garage, a double car garage, a single car garage, because they want to need that additional square footage? Is that, is that adding square footage if it's a living, or does it have to be footprint beyond the house? Is that?
That would be something the council would define.
We get to decide. That's what we haven't studied.
Okay. So I, I mean, I think there's, there's the study to do. Often in government, when there's a lot of studies done, that just becomes a tax policy down the road. I'm a little bullish towards like, or not wanting to do that. So that would be my concern. I don't know if the timing's great. I'm fine taking the pause button and seeing, but I'm just not comfortable with this being a priority.
Thank you. Council, Lee Han.
Oh, I wanted to ask about, you had some other slides, which were not in the packet here, of, that said one in 10 of our housing units are subsidized or have some subsidy in them.
No. I think it was home, homeowners, wasn't it? Was it residents? Households?
I think it's households. I think it's households. Yeah, households.
Right.
Do you know how that compares to other jurisdictions?
I would need to do further research to give you hard figures, of course, but my understanding, even before being employed by Wilsonville, was that the 50/50 housing mix that exists here is very unique in the metro area. There's no other jurisdiction I'm aware of that comes close to it. Based on that alone, I would assume that that one in 10 households figure is also different and higher than most other jurisdictions, but I just will make that disclaimer that I don't know that for sure and would need to look into it to validate.
Yeah, that's what I would guess also, that we're, and, and both of those are, excuse me, my voice is not very good tonight, are sort of driven by the very high level of seniors, senior housing we have, senior assisted, both subsidized and not subsidized, and, and the state-supported housing at Villebois for mentally ill and developmentally disabled. So both of those things drive, drive up the number of subsidized housing units.
We have a number of apartment units that are also subsidized.
And then, and then we have a lot of other, of others as well, which if you took those other two away, would probably put us on a par with other communities, but, but those two, I'm certain will drive us up on the subsidized number of units.
So one comment that I would like to, for, for the record, I, I guess I want to make sure that we, if anybody wants to find out how, some of the details on these things, you know, we're kind of extrapolating on some of the statements of how, like the supporting, the supportive services bond that was passed is not a property tax. Just wanted to clarify that.
The metro housing bonds increase property taxes.
Right, you said two of them, so one of them is?
Right, you're correct, I mean, you're correct, yes.
Sometimes we just want to be careful.
Yeah, you're correct.
It was not two, okay.
Yes, you're correct.
So counselors, it sounds like there's more to find out here, and I would also like to, while we're, I mean, I don't know about, you know, we're asking if we should study the construction excise tax. There are a number of things in that equitable housing strategic plan that were pieces of advice, such as consider using philanthropy, consider use, looking for state and federal funding. And so while we're looking at this construction excise tax, are those things being looked at also, or does it make, does it make any sense in this, in this regard, to answer your question, that we'd like to compare it to, to some of the other forms of subsidy?
I think what, what I took out of your initial part of your presentation is that there's no big pots of money out there for local governments, other than maybe you could do something with urban renewal, I suppose.
Well, okay.
And community development block grants are available for, I'm familiar in my previous cities, that we were able to run a program through Marion County and through Clackamas County using their housing authority folks. That pot of money was those cities, and folks that met a certain income threshold could access money to do home remodels and stuff like that. So there, there are definitely other programs out there that we can and will pursue as well.
So in, in answer to this question, I mean, do we need to, you know, I kind of broadened it out, you put up that slide of the other potential sources of revenue, so is this not the time to talk about studying those?
Well, we're studying those.
Okay.
And there's a, the owner of that plan, I believe, is Kim, is it Kim Reibl, the Equitable Strategic Housing Plan? So she has, and we've talked to her about Habitat for Humanity.
Okay.
So yes, that is a living plan.
I guess I'd just add as well that the, what I had hoped would be the key takeaway from this particular slide was simply that in order to access the green pot, the gray pot, and the blue pot, you probably need the yellow pot.
You need a local matching source.
Right.
Right.
And to Counselor Lindvile's point, we do need, and otherwise, we're just going to have very incremental change. And so I think it, it is a responsibility to look into this further, is what I'm hearing, and also find out what other cities are doing. I think talking about the, the ways that we can apply the match to attract some of the other sources of funds, and we're certainly not the only ones who are going to be doing this, so this is a really competitive field, is accessing these other sources of revenue.
Yeah, and your interest in other programs is duly noted, and I will see what I can do. I do know of at least one other program that the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan mentions, and that is a program modeled in Portland, it's called the Home Buyer Opportunity Limited Tax Exemption Program, HOLTE. And without getting too far into the weeds, it's a first-time homebuyer program, it's a tax exemption program, as the name suggests, but would be another one that we could consider parallel path, and it wouldn't require a revenue source, so.
But it would be lost revenue.
True.
If I could, sure, make one, one more comment. I just wanted to kind of respond as I thoughtfully to Counselor West's comments, and, and I, as I see this, that there is also the possibility of these monies going back to developers as incentives, correct? I mean, that, if we choose to develop policy in that area, that could happen.
Right, I guess I would just qualify that to say that the incentive wouldn't be so much to somehow make a project profitable to a point where it would become distasteful to the taxpayer, it would, that incentive would just get a project to be in the black and not the red. So anyway, sorry.
Right, but I think as we had, we've talked about, even the TOD, isn't that?
Yeah.
That we, that we talked about, gee, wouldn't it be great if there were some incentives that we could give to a developer to help with offsetting some of the requirements that we had as well?
Right.
For the TOD, which might be providing space for community service or services, or some other kinds of things that we really wanted to have, or a particular location that they might otherwise not want, you know, see as desirable. So, so I guess, I guess what I'm taking away, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, is we have a whole table full of possibilities, both in terms of how and, and where the monies might be collected from, and how we, as a city, might use those monies once they are collected.
That's right, there's, there's a, there's a skeleton, you know, there's a framework that we have to follow.
With poles, right.
But there's quite a bit of flexibility within that framework.
So I guess, given that, it would be helpful for me, and I know probably the hardest part of all of this is, do we have staff time to, to do all of the work that it takes to, you know, to give us the information that we need to make a good decision? And that's, that's something we need to know as well. But could we, I would be interested in seeing some other program or component parts of other programs that cities have put into theirs that would, that, that look like something we would be able to, you know, pick from, from a menu, so that we, we wouldn't be out there kind of, you know, trying to just invent the wheel all by ourselves.
Actual programs.
Actual programs.
Implemented on the ground in actual projects.
And what are they, what are they using their money for, and how are they collecting it, and, and, you know, are they piling a whole bunch of money over here, you know, you know, ratpacking it over here, and just in case, and how, you know, or is it actually being used, and how is it being used? And is it individual projects, or do they have, you know, are they, are they actually giving money to homeowners that are in a certain category or qualify or whatever? So, I mean, I would be interested in seeing that as well. And then I, and then the other thing is, I would like to have the Home Builders Association or any other stakeholders really be a part of helping us kind of refine and discuss what our options might be.
Counselor West?
Do you know why Tillamook County voters, or what was the thing behind, because in your note here, you talked about that they were the one jurisdiction to pass it and then go back on that, and the voters said, nope, we don't want that. Do we know, do you know anything about that history?
I didn't speak with one, anyone in Tillamook, but I did just copy and paste an excerpt from the press that covered it. Is it okay if I just?
Absolutely.
Okay, it says, "In a county with a red-hot coastal housing market, that move was soon challenged by area real estate interests," and that move being the introduction of a CET. Tillamook County Board of Realtors put together a petition and collected enough signatures to refer the tax to voters this past November. The effort, led by local real estate broker, and I won't name the name, leveraged funds from the Oregon Association of Realtors to distribute to mailers, broadcast radio spots, and produce digital ads all aimed at defeating the tax. The campaign was successful in convincing voters the tax would make the housing crisis worse by further discouraging development in a county where building and permit fees are already high. The tax was defeated with a 68% vote.
What are our permit fees like comparatively to our neighbors? Are they comparable, or are we higher, lower? Chris, behind me, would probably answer that better than I could.
Isn't this something that would come out of a study if we did this?
Yeah, but it's always dangerous to compare cities in terms of development fees and SDCs, because every city has different.
Some of them are funding fire and water, and others are doing that differently.
Yeah, and just different age of infrastructure, different age of water plants, sewer plants, roads, different levels of service, it's, those comparisons, to me, are always really not even worth doing unless you have.
We did that, we were asked that once with, with water fees.
Water, yeah.
And it's like, okay, but next week, that city was having their new rate.
Exactly.
10 years ago.
Yep.
So we could do that all day long.
It's like a dog chasing its tail.
So Counselor Lehan?
Yes, I would just say also, like, Counselor Lindvile, I'm interested in more information on this, and, and looking at the, at the full picture of how we do more affordable housing. The other slide, though, that I would say is also like chasing your tail, is the one about inflow and outflow. You will never get there.
How many people are living and working here, and how many are leaving to go out?
Yeah. I apologize if it, if it seemed that I thought we could ever get to 100% of people living and working in Wilsonville. I don't know that we, yeah, I agree, I do agree with you there, but to the extent that we can increase the number of people that live and work in Wilsonville, that can't be a bad thing.
No, but, but I don't think there's anything we can do that will change those numbers. I think they're pretty darn static, because, because people, because the demand here is like the demand for real estate everywhere, location, 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 and people are willing to pay more to live here because of the location relative to Portland, Salem, and I-5. And, and usually, who will pay more to live here are people who don't work here. And people who do work here can get a lot bigger house and yard and everything in Sherwood or Camby, or, you know, and only, and still only be four miles away, because those places are, are not going to pull the commuter who want, who is willing to pay a lot because they have a, a double commuter, you know, they have somebody working in Portland, somebody working in Salem. They will pay a premium, and I don't, for that house, whereas the person working here doesn't mind living five miles away and commuting five miles into Wilsonville, so.
Which, which you're really?
It's always been that way, and it, I don't see how that will change, no matter what our cost of housing is or anything.
What you're really trying to create is an opportunity for maybe somebody who would like to live here, or maybe a service worker who is looking for a down payment on the house.
Yes.
And that's the opportunity that you're.
I think that's right. I think part of what's feeding this dynamic, or not feeding it, but one thing we can learn from this dynamic is that there are probably folks who do want to both live and work here, but might not be able to.
Right.
And I think we shouldn't close the door to that.
Right.
That's still an opportunity. So, you know, it's, there are lots of popular and unpopular things to say about this topic, and you can, you can jump on one of those really easily. But what we're trying to do is find a way, using money that we don't now have, to add, to, to reduce the purchase cost of some housing and the rental rate for some housing, right? So we're trying, this is what this is doing here. And so I think this is one element that you have laid out in these initial tables, that we could follow the, we want to see if we can follow the money and see if we can control where it goes to have a reasonable impact, to make it worthwhile for all of the stakeholders. There are some of the instruments that we've talked about that I've heard described in other conversations as being a zero-sum game. So like, if we just said, oh, well, let's make it, let's just do a tax abatement, well, then the people who are living here now would end up with less money. I mean, if you do that all day long, you're not going to be able to build parks, you're not going to be able to have as many of the amenities as we have. So there, we have some tax abatements that have been really useful for some of our affordable housing. So I guess the question is figuring out, how far can we go with these things? And so there is a lot to study here. There's not a magic faucet that we turn on, and all of a sudden, there's a lot of money that comes from nowhere.
And tax abatement's not the same as the CET, right? That's a whole nother.
It's a whole.
I mean, when I bought my first home, I, tax abatement allowed me to buy my first home at like 22, 23 years old in Portland. It was a fantastic program, taxes were expensive, but that's a different type of tool in the tool shed, right?
Right, and we're just saying, it could be one.
Yeah.
But then how much would this, how much would you use of it? How much could, could make sense?
How would it come out of this, if this is specifically about a construction excise tax?
You would just, you would repay out of, out of the CET that money back to the general fund, so that we can continue to provide the same levels of service that we're currently providing. So you're not losing any revenue.
Right.
The CET would pay for that loss of property tax revenue.
So in other words, the developers, I mean, if that's where the money's coming from, residential and commercial, would, would pay into a pot of money that could be used for abatements, for homeowners that qualified.
The developers aren't paying, they're going to pass that cost on to the consumer.
So the develop.
They're passing a tax to the consumer.
They will pass it forward and backward, so if, if you're a savvy developer, you're going to know what your fee schedule is before you even make an offer. So yeah, they would pass those costs forward and backward.
How long did the, like in Portland, for example, or these other jurisdictions, how long did they, have they been doing the CETS? How long has this tax been widely used, do we know?
We'll get more information.
But just see the years.
Yeah, we'll, we'll show you what the programs that they've developed and what levels of success, we can show you actual, maybe some projects that have been used for and programs that have been developed. This is really just a discussion.
I'll tentatively go along with a stud.
A continuing study.
No, I will go along with the, with the group, but yeah.
You're not going along with the group, you're making your own statement.
No, but as a council, it sounds like you three are, let's study, and I've been the most questionable.
Nope, each person individually made their statements, so.
But if, but as a group, you come to a consensus, and it sounds like we have.
But it looks like Portland, to answer your question, put theirs in place in 16. And the reason these started in 2016 is, is I believe that is about when it became legal to do it, except for some different version that Bend did. Isn't that right about when this?
Mine was way before that.
Yeah, Ben's, Ben's, Bend, sorry.
Oh, Bend. Not Ben, Bend.
Bend, Oregon, yeah, 2006, but their program is, is.
It predates state code.
Correct, yeah, so the, the reason why the rest of these are subsequent to 2016 is because that's when the statute, SB 1533, the bill, passed.
It's why Ashland is one of the only cities that has a local sales tax on food and beverage.
So the construction excise tax start legislation was about 2016, right?
Correct.
But separately, people have used, and Wilsonville has used tax abatements, like the one you. the one you made use of, in a, separately, for many years.
And I wonder how that was done before this, but.
The way you explained it, it does sound like the Hulte program that I was referring to, but of course.
It does, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, if you meet certain income thresholds and the property is of a certain valuation, then, yep.
Do you know if they backfill their general fund from another revenue source?
I, I don't know.
That's a good question.
That's a good question, yeah.
Yeah.
And on that note, I don't want to overpromise. Many of these programs are in their nascent because they've only been on the books for a short period of time. They're still collecting revenue, initial revenue, to figure out and, and parsing out right now how they're going to structure their programs.
Amanda, do you know how McMinnville's going to use their funds? But we can get that information.
Sounds like this is going to be a really simple, straightforward project.
We have some research and work to do.
Probably vary a lot.
Thank you very much.
Go forth.
Okay, so that brings us to our discussion of Frog Pond East and South Master Plan. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dan Polly Planning Manager. And how long did you want me to go on this? I know we're running a bit.
Well, you're fine. We have an hour, and you're scheduled for 30, so.
Well, this is a change from our usual.
So, you can talk slowly.
Sounds like you're busy down there.
I might, yeah.
All right, so I'm back again to talk more about Frog Pond, and appreciated the comments during the last work session, and we'll make sure I touch on answering those. I also appreciate the time I was able to spend with a number of counselors to discuss this one-on-one. So, for tonight's work session, really want to hit on reviewing what we're calling housing design types, and this really gets, one of the questions that really came out last time as we looked at draft alternatives is, what do these colors mean on these maps? So, reviewing the housing design types, as well as talking about housing variety policy options, I think will really help define what, what those colors mean better. And then, with that, as additional discussion and background, we'll go back to what now is a draft master plan preferred alternative, and can get additional council comments on So, a couple few work sessions ago, we, we talked through design concepts, kind of guiding principles to guide the, the design work and the master planning work for Frog Pond East and South. And as it relates to housing, some of these that I'll highlight is that there's housing variety throughout the neighborhood that is not segregated, one place or another, that there's affordable housing, including the affordable housing targets we've talked about previously, are integrated throughout. And also, there's a transect in urban form. That last one, that's a bunch of, sounds like a bunch of lingo, but really, think of Villebois, where you have the densest portion in the middle, and then it fans out towards the edge. That's kind of the concept there, that it's thoughtfully laid out. As we talked about variety and the transect, I think it's, it's really helpful to think about this in a large, broad scale, or zoomed-out scale versus a granular scale or zoomed-in scale. So, when you look at these, this is just a screenshot here of the draft preferred alternative, and you see three colors. But if you zoom into any of those colors within that, there's a lot of variety represented by those colors. So, that's important to remember. So, you know, the brown isn't all one type of housing, the goldenrod isn't one type of housing, and the light, lighter yellow tan is not one type of housing. If you zoom in, there's a lot of variety within that color. And we'll talk more about options of how to define what that variety within that color is, as well as, we'll show some examples of pictures of existing development, particularly in Villebois and Frog Pond West, represent what could be, what we are thinking at this point could be represented by those colors. So, at that, I will transition and talk about the three housing design types, and I'll say that these are still draft, and so if there's ideas of how to define these design types, that's still something up for discussion, and happy to take those. One way to really help understand this is also is to understand what's, what's the same, what's the common threads throughout these design, these three design types, as well as what's different. So, what's the same is that, again, there is variety in unit type in each of these. I think a useful, when we're talking about the level of variety, which we'll talk in more detail about exact percentages in future work sessions, but think the Villebois Village Center, where, you know, you have all sorts of housing types right in the same blocks and area. And with that, there's limited isolation. You don't have like a Robert Randall-type development from the 80s, where you have all the multifamily on this side of the street and all the single-family on the other side of the street as part of a master plan. Within an area, there's, though, there's, each area has a consistent set of standards around bulk and setbacks, so there's some consistency and thoughtfulness to the design patterns. And also, throughout, that is organized around focal points, similar to Villebois, where you have small parks or other green spaces that are the, are the focus of the urban design or the layout of, of the neighborhoods. Really, what's different then is that we're not talking numerical density. Again, we're really talking about urban design, or the, kind of the look and feel, and this varies by the bulk of buildings, how tall they are, how long the facade of the building is along the street, how far the buildings are setback from the street, as, as well as how far they are from each other. Lot size, when I say lot size, I use that broadly, is kind of the land area ratio to a structure, as well as how, how access to the property is. Is it a front-loaded garage versus alley-loaded with, for off-street parking? So, let's get into some examples here, starting with type 1, which in the, as drafted, this is the densest look and feel, and really think Village Center here, a number of examples, like this three-story, three-unit townhouse in Villebois would be an example. Here's a five-unit townhouse. But then, in a similar bulk of building, you have stacked-flat condos, which represents, which provide single-level living ownership opportunities. Also, in the same, you, you may have three-story detached homes that have a similar, on a, on a block have a similar bulk. Type 2 design type, so we're looking at, at a small, smaller frontages, and more two-story, three-story would still be allowed, but predominantly two-story with the size. So, here's an example of a three-unit townhouse building in Villebois, which a lot of you, it's a very prominent building, a lot of you probably recognize it. This would be example of a wider building on shallow lots, and this is, I, this, I believe this one altogether is about 5,000 square feet of land. But then, on a similar-sized amount of land, you have alley-loaded larger home, or front-loaded home about, of similar width. Also, there's single-level homes, so all of the areas would allow single-level homes. We'll get into this in more detail future, but of how it works, but cottages or those small, single-level living opportunities would be available in all the design types. But here's an example of, have a closely spaced, a single-level home in Frog Pond West. Then, the type 3 design type, which is the less dense fill, part one, two-story structures, kind of spaced a bit more from the street, but in, on lots, kind of 6,000 square feet and more. To show the variety, here's a four-unit townhouse building in, in Villebois that would meet kind of the design, the bulk of a larger, single-family detached home. Here's a two-unit townhouse building in Frog Pond West, again, similarly, kind of the width that would fit into that, and then, what, you know, front-loaded, single-family So, with that, I hope that helped kind of visualize of what the type of variety that could be included in each of these colors. So, then, really, that leads into discussion, which was the focus of the Planning Commission discussion last week, of what then are our policy options for creating housing variety and encouraging housing variety in Frog Pond West. So, here's a few basics on that. First of all, we're talking about regulating unit type, not price point here, which is an important note. This can help ensure middle housing implementation, including help comply with House Bill 2001 as the rules are written, or, and are in the process of being revised for new urban areas. And the reality is, based on our, our experience and patterns we see around the region and the nation, likely, there'd be limited variety without some sort of zoning requirement related to it. Some other things, though, we need to have some reasonable flexibility. We don't want to be too granular and too rigid, that then it just doesn't work, that we didn't anticipate something. Based on our, our Villebois experience, variety is best regulated in buckets, in grouping similar type of units that maybe have a similar urban form, and allowing that flexibility within that bucket. And also, under state regulations and good practice, the regulations need to be clear and objective, especially if these are going to be all reviewed administratively as required by, by law. So, there really comes down to four. Option, variety, options for regulating housing variety, which was presented to Planning Commission. I've, again, talked to a number of you one-on-one about this as well. The first one is to encourage only, essentially do the zoning and then let the market decide. Again, that would, they tend to, tend towards one type, or a couple types, less variety. The next one is to identify some housing types that would be beneficial for the community that the market might not deliver, one of these that may be discussed, such as smaller single-level living, either in, in different form, or attached, a middle housing, may be some examples. And so, it's simply require that a minimum amount of those, of those target housing types are built in a given geographic area. Another way to approach it is to understanding that developers are going to tend towards kind of a uniform housing type to max, to set a cap on the number of one housing type that could be built in a given geographic area. So, if there, if there are preferences to build detached, single-family, then saying maybe 50% of a given area can be single-family, but the other 50% has to be something else, or has to have ADUs, or, or some variety like that. So, as we worked on, talked about this as a project team, made this recommendation to City Council, to Planning Commission, this fourth option of really combining two and three, of having, of setting a minimum for target housing types, as well as limiting the, to encourage variety, limiting the amount of uniformity in housing type, would be the recommendation that's supported by, by staff, as well as Planning Commission. And also, I know I've had some positive comments from counselors I've talked to so far as well. So, I wanted to then pause there. We'll get, again, to the draft alternatives, but before doing that, I wanted to, while this is still fresh, I wanted to pause and have a discussion about these policies and what we've talked about. Really, so the discussion questions I, I'd suggest we cover is what additional ideas the council may have about the different design types, how the council feels about policy option 4, if there's additional questions, clarifications, and overall, should, should the city require a certain mix of housing in Frog Pond East and South? And what additional questions in general do you have about this housing variety policy that we're, we're looking at pursuing? So, with that, Mayor, I'll give it to you.
Thank you. I see Counselor Linville.
Thank you.
Yes?
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Polly, I want to tell you that I appreciate, I mean, we spent quite a bit of time on the telephone discussing this, and I, I appreciate your time and the opportunity to, to ask all the questions that I needed to ask, so I appreciate that. As I indicated, when we had our discussion, I am in favor of that fourth option, and I appreciate, and I appreciated when I had the discussion that, even though we couldn't see the, in a granular way, the mix that was proposed for, for the housing types within each of the areas, that really addressed some of the concerns that I had initially, thinking that we were going to have blocks of different kinds of housing, which, to me, really, you know, that kind of segregation of neighborhoods really was of concern to me. So, so knowing that that was not going to be the case, and I, and the, and the three housing type designs, I, I, I support as well. Having said all of that, and in terms of the policy issues, I know that the city was very successful in the diversity of housing types in Villebois, and the, the mixing of those housing types within different neighborhoods. And I'm wondering, were there similar policy discussions in terms of requiring types and minimums and housing types in development in Villebois that would be similarly, could be similarly overlaid, or are we looking at something that's totally different?
It's a little different approach, similar ideas on the broad level. Certainly, in Villebois, we had a master planner, and the ownership kind of situation was differently, was different for the most part. So, kind of those policies were talked about, and that master planner came in and kind of put all the colors, granular colors in there initially. And then, in the code, it was built in some flexibility to move within the buckets. Really, the thought here in setting this policy is where some developers are initially at the table here, there's one developer that has an option that we're having conversations with, but we don't really know who's developing the rest of it, and there's not a master planner. So, really, what this policy would do is kind of set, set the policy, but then defer to developer to actually work out how, plan how it actually works on the ground within that policy. So, that allows them, gets us to our policy, our outcome, but gives the flexibility for them on the ground when the time comes.
So, so it would be as a proxy for the master planner?
Right. So, that master planner would kind of more happen in pieces over time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Linville. And I'm going to ask the staff to, or the council to bear with me for a second, because I wanted to relay Council President Ockerval's comments. I'm going to segue for a minute back to the construction excise tax. She is not able to be here today, and she did give us, give us some comments. She also gave some comments to us regarding this topic. And essentially, her thoughts about the construction excise tax were very similar to the, the comments we said here, there's a lot more to be studied. You know, I think she was, you know, she's supportive of studying this. There's a lot more to learn. Council President Ockerval also said that we want to see how other cities have done this successfully, and she recognizes that with regard to the construction excise tax, no one wants to start a new tax, but if we truly want to do some of the programs mentioned in the equitable housing strategic plan, we will eventually need to figure out how to fund them. We can't just wish a program to happen. I don't know if construction excise tax is the right solution, but I also wonder if we refuse looking into possible funding option and still try to talk about the. we refuse looking into possible funding option and still try to talk about the programs as we hope to accomplish, are we being very genuine? We will actually see these new opportu- will we see these opportunities realized if we don't study it? So that's, that was her, and I think that doesn't change the idea that we, we said to go ahead and study. So thank you for, um, allowing me to add that late comment. And then I will, um, add Council President Akravol's comments about Frog Pond. Back to you, Mr. Polly. And she also had a long meeting with staff, um, since we last met. And she said that they covered, um, a lot of the details about Frog Pond and she also appreciated your time on this, is a, is a big, a big subject and I know you've given, I had a long meeting with you too, so thank you for that. Um, so she says that, um, uh, the city now has a table that shows a possible percent of different housing that could exist within each of the housing types, type one, two, and three category. And this is just one possible outcome, but seeing how these mix of housing types could work out helps reveal the many possibilities that exist within each housing type. And it puts some focus back on overall form rather than hard numbers. Again, as we have discussed on council, I think a variety is important as well as an overall cohesive and attractive aesthetic. Council President Akravol goes on to say, she wants to build a variety of quality homes for our community to choose from. The research and data staff has provided show that a variety is desired. Some people want large homes, some people want single-level, some people want smaller, more affordable homes. We need something that brings harmony with all of these housing types. And she hopes that the plans will support a framework for this desired variety. She thought the suggestions from the Planning Commission were reasonable at trying to accomplish this balance. And she had two thoughts to share with staff, um, regarding placement of the type one area. Council President Akravol was interested in the possibility of being able to use some of the Bonneville Power Administration easement to help serve immediate or future parking needs. And asked what the thoughts were about that, since there is a padding of type two, type two between the easement and type one. You have to look at the maps to see where this is. Um, she says it seems that the type one might have the most parking demands. So, um, and I, I think, um, I should also relay, um, her last comment on this Frog Pond, um, decision we're talking about is she wants us to know that she asked staff about the ability for transit to service the type one area that is south of the school. And Council President Akravol thinks it is important that all of type one have easy transit access and should also serve the school. Okay. So that's input from Council President Akravol. Anyone else like to make some comments or ask any questions?
Not just yet.
Not just yet? I would, while you're thinking about that, um, I definitely support the idea of the mixed housing types throughout. I think that provides the best use of, um, the open space, um, with the price of land, um, across the country and we're hearing across the world, um, we have to think about that, you know, get even more creative on how to make that open space useful to people and accessible and nearby if they're living in, in an apartment, if they're living in a one-story stacked condo with elevators or a sing- you know, a single-family house, um, single standalone detached house. So I think, you know, doing some great design of these spaces that recognizes the terrain and also incorporates the different types of housing is really important. Um, so I do support option four. And I think we should require a certain mix of housing. This is going to be a long plan and, uh, we don't, you know, we don't want to end up with all small houses or all apartments. So I'm, you know, we're saying a certain mix. And I also, um, wanted to talk about the Bonneville Power Administration easement that we see on the map. And maybe we could go to the map for, do you have a map we could look?
Yeah, certainly.
So we see that easement coming across there and it's too early to know what we can do with that. Is that right?
Yeah, I mean, we have some ideas. We're starting thinking about it.
So this is a time to think about some of those ideas.
Yeah.
Um, and so getting the, the most bene- you know, obviously, we always want to get the best use out of, out of the land, um, for the best-looking neighborhood, most functioning. And we've had some experience with Charbonneau and Villebois and this is a different, and Frog Pond West. Um, and so with that easement, perhaps we can, um, have that serve as some carport, some even, if garages are, are of interest to the consumers, um, I've seen some examples where those are, are not necessarily built onto the house with cottage clusters. Um, I've lived in a house like that where you have an ar- an open carport and you have, um, storage within the carport and the living, the, the, the small house is, is separate in a cottage-type environment. And so that we're not using up a lot of land, um, to store houses, to store cars under roofs, basically. So I think there's a place to use some of those. I hope we can use some of that easement for some of the parking. Um, and then other, one other thing I wanted to say about this, it's not part of what you're doing now, but as we design these neighborhoods, I think we should think about, um, the, I just want to plant a seed out there that in all of our neighborhoods, not just here, other places, there are cars taking up space that no one ever drives. There are cars with flat tires, cars with expired tags, and they're, they're eating up space and driving up the cost of the land and the cost of housing. So, um, that's, that's something I'm really going to be looking at because we want to use this land for really great neighborhoods, um, great parks, great houses, place to park your car, but not for a, um, junkyard for broken-down cars. Thank you.
I was just going to say, where we've already done it is Morrie's Landing. So Morrie's Landing has a giant BPA easement running through it. It has a bike path through the middle of that easement and parkland on either side, but I don't know what the restrictions are in Morrie's Landing for what they can or can't do.
And they've talked about different ideas in there over the time. So I think there's additional opportunity to use it more than a path.
No, no structures, but I think parking is something.
And you can't plant trees, probably.
But could you put a soccer field or a football thing?
Certain BPA power lines that do have active play areas under them.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, I mean, it's, uh, it's a reasonably attractive thing in Morrie's Landing, but it probably could be taken more advantage of.
And there's some natural drainage here that I think is beneficial for stormwater.
To be a, a more of a linear park like goes through.
Kind of slopes, a lot of land slopes into this area, so.
And I think the, oh, so, well, I think, I guess what I'm also thinking long, you know, when we talk about getting the most out of that BPA easement, because you're clearly not going to build any housing there. Um, so how can you get the most out of that even more creatively than we ever have before? And that could be a contributing factor to making it possible to have some first-time homebuyer opportunities, just looking for ways to move some of the expensive, less critical uses of the land, like for a carport or a soccer field or a pollinator garden over there.
Can you do a carport?
It seems like a structure.
Not enclosed, or is that too much of a structure?
I mean, the metal structure that's tall?
Maybe not.
Not, maybe not. I, I have to confirm. I know our engineers worked with building, trying to put lights and.
Or maybe it's just open parking because the way garages are now, a lot of the garages are used to store.
Stuff.
Direction, decorations and bicycles and things, and the cars are sitting outside. Any other, I'm not seeing any more comments or questions?
No, I like number four also. If we're still back on number four. I don't know where that went to. Okay. But I, I have question. How does this, uh, I see the, the various, um, design plans range from about 1,300 to 1,800 dwelling units, is that right?
Yeah, I can get into that a bit more.
I, I just wondered how that compares to Villebois or Charbonneau or some other neighborhood?
Sure. So, um, and those numbers changed, so just briefly why they changed is, you know, the numbers were initially based on fuzzy lines. You know, the draft alternatives were fuzzy lines and now that you put, you know, the ride-away and the hard lines into, uh, draft preferred alternative as well as we've got some clarification of the school dis- from the school district of whether or not they have any long-term plans to surplus, you know, the property they own in the area, uh, which they do not plan to. So that's kind of took, uh, that took down the unit count a bit, but then just refining that. So, uh, barring any other questions on the alternatives, or excuse me, on the policy, I can kind of show where we are on the land use alternative. So, uh, Council President Akravol referred to kind of the mix table. Uh, this is what, uh, she was referring to. And the, so we are making some mix assumptions. However, I want to say that this still, this is not a policy decision on mix. Uh, it's for planning purposes, uh, really with an eye to the reasonable max development for planning purposes, but to making sure you're not putting too big of pipes in the ground, but you're putting them big enough that you don't have to dig them up and replace them in the future. Uh, and what this reflects is percent of units, not percent of land, uh, that we're, we're assuming, uh, for purpose of transportation and infrastructure planning. The type one, this mix actually reflects pretty closely, uh, the, the Village Center. Uh, and then type two are just the project team's best guess. Again, leaning towards those thing, those, uh, erring on the side of units that may have a larger impact, just to make sure that we're accommodating for them if they do get built. So with those assumptions, that does end up, uh, guiding where we are. And again, those mix refers to each of these colors is, if you zoom in, is a variety of different colors as well. So these are the three alternatives that we presented last work session. And what we've heard from the Planning Commission is, uh, south of, south of Advance really going with C, the big driver there is variety. Again, they felt it had the greatest variety. North of Advance, uh, they also liked C because of the variety. Uh, but there was a good discussion about whether it should be kind of the, the type one or the, the, the higher-density look and feel should be centered towards the middle, around the park versus along Stafford. Kind of, in the end, I think the predominant thinking and going back last week, I think they're, or they, they relayed that they're comfortable with this approach, is having it type two along Stafford, just so it better mirrors what's on the other side of the road in Frog Pond West. Uh, and really, the, the Planning Commission is doing a good job focusing on, again, the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan and everything that that plan said about the future planning in Frog Pond, as well as reflecting the work that was done earlier in this project around affordable housing and really keying in on that variety throughout, that not wanting to segregate housing types and have, uh, a variety. So then this is, uh, the draft preferred alternative. Again, this is still in draft form. My Counselor Akravol had some comments that we'll share with the design team and work with around transit and using the, the BPA easement the best we can. But generally, we have, again, you have the, a couple focal points, uh, where, where you have the brown or the type one and then it fans out to the type three on the edge generally. Uh, and, and what we end up in terms of unit count with this alternative, and I would invite the council, if you have comments today, that's great, but also, uh, we're going to continue to take this out to the community. If you have additional ideas as we continue to refine this, to move these colors around for different reasons, uh, we want to continue to discuss that. So what we end up with in this rendition is overall about 1,600 units. And actually, in the transportation analysis, just to kind of do what they call sensitivity analysis and test what the threshold is to trigger, uh, additional, uh, infrastructure improvements, they're actually working, assuming at 1,800 total units, just to, to test the transportation system, uh, for the maximum that could happen and make sure we're not running into issues down the road. So you see those numbers there. And so the numbers do tend to vary because we don't know, again, it's unlike other developments like Villebois, we, I think in the end, we had, it was somewhere between 2,300 and 2,700 units and we ended up at 2,600. We had like a minimum of 2,300. We ended up, I think some plans had as much as like 2,700 units. When it's all said and done, we're going to be just over 2,600 units. So, I mean, there's going to be even kind of more flexibility in the amount of units, likely more towards the higher end, uh, based on land cost and such. But the estimate right now, based on what we know, again, subject to further refinement of variety requirements, is just under half single-detached in a variety of formats, about 41%, uh, middle housing and 12% multi-dwelling and a good portion of that multi-dwelling may be projects, uh, developments that are subsidized and meeting, meeting those targets that we previously discussed. Uh, so that is all I had to present and happy to take additional comments, questions. And I will go back if it's helpful to the map.
So, um, just to recap, we, we seem to all have a general appreciation for, for the combination of the housing types. And then in doing that, if we go to those pie charts and looking at the land available, it comes out to about 1,600 units. But that could change, what are some things that would change that? Can you just go, go through that again?
So this is, so that is based on these assumptions of the unit mix.
Okay.
So if those mixes end up being something different, because again, this is.
Because they, they will have a range.
They will have a range.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask a clarif- a range or a minimum number?
There would be a minimum number as well.
So a range and a minimum? Well, I guess you end up with a range if you have minimums on all types.
You have a minimum and then, you know, what's, what's feasible to actually build physically? So.
Does that make sense?
Is it, again, with the middle housing rules, you can't cap units, the number of units you build on a lot of these lots, like you did, you know, like any lot could be four units as long as it's big enough under the middle housing rules because the middle housing is exempt from any density. So. housing is exempt from any density, so that's why we tend towards kind of that traditional units per acre in this design, because in this approach, because the middle housing rules kind of threw that approach out the window, and so...
That was one of the reasons I asked about the range, because if you set a minimum, you don't need a range.
Yeah, there will be a minimum, but then the range from there, I mean, you'll have to make sure there, it meets parking minimums and all those other design considerations, so those are really the limiting factors.
And over this, you know, this whole plan could take 20 years to build?
Correct.
And over that time, we could see changes in what maybe the state requires for parking minimums?
Very likely.
As well?
There are definitely trends that way, and with the climate-friendly and equals community rules that are the process of being adopted.
So, and regarding the questions that you brought, that you had for today's session, how are we doing? I'm going to go back and see.
I think we're, we have some good direction on further developing option four, and coming back with maybe some percentages and kind of what that looks like in more detail for future work sessions, and then just if there's any additional feedback on where the colors sit on the map today. Again, this is our last discussion, I mean, as more time, we want to, you know, as time goes by, we want to solidify it more and more, but it's still in a draft form for sure right now and open for additional comments.
Okay, well...
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Not about anything you covered here, but the cell tower is a given, it has to be exactly there?
Well, the cell tower exists, and I haven't looked at the details of the lease agreement or if we want to buy out the lease and...
Put it in a better spot.
A better spot, I mean, that could be a possibility, but that hasn't been explored.
We don't, we don't know, we don't know about that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Well, seeing none, I think our, this discussion is concluded. Thank you, Mr. Pauli.
Thank you for your time.
And I think that's our last item for the work session, so I'm going to adjourn the work session, and we will reconvene at 7:00 PM.
Okay. Good evening. I'm calling to order a meeting of the Wilsonville City Council on Monday, May 8th, or July 18th at 7:00 PM. And I'd like to ask the city recorder to do a roll call.
Counselor Linville.
Here.
Counselor West.
Here.
Counselor Lee Han.
Here.
Mayor Fitzgerald.
Here.
And Council President O'Carrawal is excused.
Thank you. Will the city manager please lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Counselors, may I have a motion to approve the following order of agenda?
Your Honor, I move to approve the following order of agenda.
Second?
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 4-0. And that brings us to the first part of our agenda, which is mayor's business. And we are going to start with our wonderful Civics Academy graduation. And the Civics Academy, I'll just start out with a couple of comments, and then we are going to be meeting each of you at the table there in a little while, and we have your graduation present, prize. It's wonderful that you all participated in this program. Civics Academy is one of the key programs that provides opportunities for our residents to learn more in depth about how the city works. And I personally hope that all of you will use this as an opportunity to ask questions. And if you hear somebody say something that sounds dissimilar from what you learned, ask them to call and find out, or you come and call and find out. And together, I think we can all know more about how our city works and keep participating in ways to keep it a great place to live. So thank you for being part of this. Ms. Mombert, Zoe right here is the assistant to the city manager, and Zoe oversees this program, which we see as quite successful. We appreciate your comments and look for your suggestions on ways it can be even better. And Ms. Mombert is here tonight to give us more information on the 2022 graduating class of the Wilsonville Civics Academy.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor. This evening, I have the opportunity to share with you a few of the accomplishments of our 2022 Civics Academy before our annual graduation ceremony. This year, we got to start via Zoom, which was not exactly how we wanted to start. And this year, we heard the most from our community members that they really wanted to meet their neighbors. This was the first time that we had people saying, we really hope this was an opportunity where we could meet our neighbors. So I'm pleased to say that we were able to go from Zoom to hybrid and then successfully make it to an in-person program. They were able to visit our water and wastewater plant, as well as Tualton Valley Fire and Rescue. They had the opportunity to meet via Zoom with Representative Courtney Neron for our annual state Capitol tour. And we're still waiting to schedule our Coffee Creek tour, but I've promised that we will make sure that they get there. Although it was a more challenging environment this year with the Zoom to in-person and organizing all of that and keeping people engaged, we did get to graduate 24 participants out of 28. And they were able to learn about a number of our departments, including community development, finance, SMART, Parks and Rec, and Public Works. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions about the program. For those that are interested, we will be opening up the 23 program on September 1st.
Any counselors have a question? It looks like we're ready for the next part of the program. So I'm going to first read off the names of some people who could not be here tonight, who were part of your class, and just recognize them. The first one who was not able to join us today is Anastasia Gubina, Doina Bresen, Jack Armstrong, Olivia Williams, and Sidney Owen. And so I thank them for their time they spent in this class with us. And now what we're going to do is, we have these wonderful signs that we're going to give you. And I'll start, I'll call up your name, and you get your sign. And the first one is for Alice Galloway. Pretty cool, huh?
So everyone stick around because we're going to give you your picture.
Okay. And, okay, our next one is Anna Lee Aaron. There she is. Ansha Graham. Clark Hildem. Daniel Carachola. Hannah Chola. Angela, I should have said. And Elizabeth Billman. Jordan Heron is on Zoom, so they will get their, yeah, they will get their sign later. Kathleen Jackson Walker.
She gets a big one.
And Lynda Moulton. Thank you. Oh, James Hensel. Oh, it's right here. I thought this was... Louis Mackey. Mayor Pat Hensel. And on Zoom, we have Mary Clausen, so we'll give her a round of applause. And Mary Pettinger. And Mitchell Cooper. Oh, another one I don't think I read earlier is Olivia Williams. I'm not sure if I read her name earlier. Sherry Die, I have a lot of different names. And Siobhan Murphy. Thank you. Cynthia Russell. And Trey Turner. Their students are really getting younger and younger. Well, is there anyone here tonight that we missed that should have a sign? Okay. Really good. Well, thanks very much, everyone, and give yourself... So now we're going to come up here for a picture.
With your, with your sign.
Yes, with your sign.
And your elected officials.
We'd like all the counselors to...
The photo op, every meeting now.
I know, it's like a thing.
I'm not, no, I'm going to wait and let all of you fill in here. I'll go where Bill tells me to go.
So can we maybe do a third row in the front? Maybe a few more in the third row. I can't go in my piece.
Thank you. No, don't worry. We've got great volunteers. Okay. Thank you. Everybody give a big smile and hold your sign back.
Now, you're going to want to look at all these cameras at the same time.
I'm not important. Because I'm going to see a photo of record. So I'm going to count to three, and I've already started taking your pictures, but I'll do it anyway. One, two, three. Now you can look at other cameras.
Cupcakes. Grab a cupcake.
It's a long day.
A whole nother world I know.
And you're welcome, of course, to stay for the rest of the meeting, but of course not for the entire.
You're also welcome not to. Well, then, I guess you didn't visit.
You are, it's, it's a choice. You're not required to stay, but please take your cupcakes.
And take an extra one for the little one. Okay. You're welcome. Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
And then our 2.0 first is set to come back later.
We're fully inside these.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hubert, right?
Yeah, but I work in Hubert. Right across that square.
Try it.
Very nice. Thank you.
Sure.
Those are the kind that you, we won't be able to get rid of the purple or the blue off of our lips.
That's why you eat it, that's why you eat it now and then, just duck into the restaurant.
You want another one? Are you pretty sure? Is there's access? You want, you want another one?
We do have.
Tell Brian how to do the pledge.
Tell me again where you're going.
Starting off in Ireland, and then, then we'll go to Northern Ireland for one night, and then Scotland. Glasgow. Inverness, Dean Andrews, and then we make our way into England. Three nights in London. Couple of cities as I travel down.
Oh, because I've been mayor the whole...
Spend a couple days with them. Where all did you go? You went to Finland. Did you hook up with Barbara and...
Yeah.
How was it?
Yeah, it was fun.
Oh, good.
Yeah. We had dinner. They came to our hotel. She and Suzie came to our hotel. Then first night, we got into Paris. And then the next day, we had lunch with Suzie. And then Barbara had gotten tickets for, I think they were going to go to the ballet.
Did you guys go?
No, no, no. No. So they had plans, and that was, that was pretty much all we saw of them.
Are we live right now? I mean, we're just talking about the travel. That's always an important line.
Sure. Give your title, find out where I'm from.
We've got, there's the staff. I pass lines. Vatican, and St. Peter's, and one other place. Other than that, it's pretty, pretty open.
Oh, God, I was there.
Yeah. Still in Billwell. It's a few blocks away. Yeah. Just drove through there. Am I too slow? Am I? Maybe? Ish. Hit the baby? Yeah. I think there's, I mean, we pulled some that good from that. I just, it's, it's like Pavlovian. I just stand up and start going. So it's progress. I know Pavlovian, I don't know him. Yeah. That's way different now. We're going on 27,000, 28,000. I appreciate all the input that you have. And it was okay to be quick then, because no one's in the audience for staff. All right, that's good input. Thank you. Just in case she accidentally passed nothing next time. Oh, you guys need waters? That's where it's coming. Free water.
I'm still, I'm still in training. All right.
I'm happy to pass that duty back now if we're in person.
As long as you keep preparing the agendas.
Keep doing that.
Well, we're going to reconvene meeting of the city council. And I will continue with some of the comments on mayor's business. The first item is actually a point that I'm going to ask the city manager to, I think, lead for us, a discussion about appointing a city manager pro tem during, oh, just a minute, Brian. I'm not ready for that yet. I got my, we'll do that in a little bit.
Okay.
No, we're ready. We'll do that. See, I thought that was out of order, but we're going to go ahead and do the, the pro tem appointment.
Okay. So there's a little quirk in our charter that says that if a city manager's out of country, we, you have to appoint a manager pro tem. And it just so happens that Gina will also be out for a week.
the I-205 toll project, and the city is participating in the toll study group. ODOT has made a number of changes to the scope and schedule of the environmental assessment process, and City of Wilsonville and many other cities and mayors and city councilors and citizens have participated in providing a lot of input to this project. The legislature advanced funding for the initial work on the I-205 project to improve the I-205 Abernathy Bridge over the Wlamet River starting this summer. However, ODOT indicates that highway toll revenue from the I-205 toll project is still needed to construct the remaining elements of the I-205 improvements projects. The, thus, ODOT will be reviewing issues associated with construction of a third lane on I-205 between Stafford Road and Oregon 213 for revised environmental assessment. And there's more that you can read about that if you want to go to the ODOT website and just key in the I-205 project, and you can pull up an executive summary. We've also been talking about the ODOT Oregon Highway Plan Toll Amendment. And regarding that amendment, which again has been having a lot of input from area mayors and, and citizens and city councilors, the city intends to submit comments to ODOT by the August 1 deadline regarding proposed tolling policies in the Oregon Highway Plan. The proposed amendment regarding tolling pertains to ODOT policies when and if tolling is used to generate revenue for highway improvements or to reduce rush hour traffic volumes. The specific issue for Wilsonville pertains to the Charbonneau District. If we want to look at one of the most local impacts, and that is how will residents of Charbonneau be directly impacted by the new policy? And ODOT is considering using the I-5 Boone Bridge as a toll gantry for northbound trips. And you may recall that ODOT is undertaking an engineering design now for an estimated $500 million for the I-5 Boone Bridge and seismic improvement project. The money is required to pay for at least part of that $500 million bill, the money from highway toll revenue. So Charbonneau, which is south of the Boone Bridge, of course, would presumably be impacted by such a tolling policy. And when Charbonneau was developed in the 1970s, ODOT allowed I-5 to be used as access for Charbonneau to Wilsonville. Thus, it seems unfair to penalize Charbonneau residents, and I know we've heard from residents, and this is a concern they have expressed in, in letters as well, to I-5, to pay to use I-5 to access the remainder of Wilsonville when ODOT policies at the time of Charbonneau's development allowed Charbonneau to advance. So I do want to add that in, I, I went to a meeting today of the Washington County mayors, and ODOT presented, and I also, I believe, the last week went to a meeting with cities in Clackamas County, and we had ODOT presenting. And in both meetings, I did ask about this, because there is a, a comment period right now. Again, I encourage anybody who would like to help with providing testimony and comments to go to the ODOT website. And I, I think we can, we'll ask our communications team to put a link on the website on how you can comment, because I, I've asked the question several times. What is the answer we give to people who live near one of these toll gantries? If they're having to go back and forth several times a day, are they going to have to pay multiple tolls? And the reason I ask that is because much of the discussion has been also appropriately around how will people living in poverty at the lowest income be able to pay the tolls? And so right now, they're taking testimony on the, the low income effects, the burden of the tolling on low-income populations, and today they told me that this would be the time for people living in communities that, because of the location near a toll grant, uh, gantry, they feel like they would be especially impacted to, also, they would be considered a burdened class, and I've been, a burden, they would be experiencing a burden. And so ODOT has responded that we should have people submit comments to that regard, and none of the pricing or details are available right now, but this is the time to submit letters and comments. July 23rd at Town Center Park, I'm switching gears now to a celebration of the Korean War Armistice. Excuse me. Allergies. So next Saturday, June 23rd, starting at 10:00 a.m., the Korean War Veterans of America Oregon Trail Chapter and the Korean War Memorial Foundation of Oregon are hosting the Korean War Armistice Observance Ceremony. The annual event is set to occur at the Oregon Korean War Memorial in Town Center Park, and this ceremony is always really, I just really enjoy it. I encourage all the councilors to come and any of you to, to join us. There are a lot of military family members there and veterans and Korean people in our area, and it's very, it's a really nice ceremony, and I really encourage you to attend. And Korea is now one of the United States foremost trading partners. And I will add my other tie to Korea is my only two grandchildren are still living in Korea, and they've really enjoyed it. And a deployment with the U.S. Army for two years, and they will be moving back to the U.S. in two weeks. So please join us at that event. The next city council meeting is Monday, August 1st at 7:00 p.m. And this brings us now to the communications segment of our agenda, and we have a presentation, I think, by Mr. Nam Su about the Bronze Walk Friendly Communities designation.
I'm Chris Nam Su. I'm the city's community development director. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to recognize Wilsonville as one of 23 cities and towns from across the United States who have been designated as a walk-friendly community in 2022. For the third time, the Walk Friendly Communities Program has recognized the city's work to prioritize pedestrians and create safe and inviting places to walk. Wilsonville first earned the designation in 2011 and has now been twice re-designated as a bronze-level walk-friendly community. The designation is valid for a period of five years. Sustaining this designation for more than a decade is a substantial achievement. It's reflective of a long-held council commitment to prioritize pedestrian safety and mobility. Walkable communities are desirable places to live and work, and Wilsonville is certainly evidence of that. The recognition follows a detailed review of Wilsonville's sustained efforts to elevate the needs of pedestrians across all areas of transportation programming. The National Walk Friendly Communities Program was established to encourage cities and towns across the country to develop and support walking environments with an emphasis on safety, mobility, access, and comfort. The program is managed by the University of North Carolina Highway Safety Research Center, and the program distinguishes communities leading the way in walkability and seeks to share their stories to inspire other communities to move towards their own innovative solutions. City staff is very proud to be part of an organization who prioritizes the experiences of pedestrians community-wide. So congratulations to the council on receipt of this national award for the third time. And I've been told that the plaque is in the mail, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Supply chain, I'm sure.
Thank you, Mr. Nam Su. That's really wonderful. I know I really enjoy walking a lot. I haven't had quite as much time since becoming mayor, but my husband does.
Awesome. That's awesome.
He's retired, and, but we do walk around a lot, and, and I wanted to add something to this. There's always something that individual citizens and residents can do to make it possible for an award like that to really count, and that is to slow down when you're driving. And I had, you know, we all, we, if you leave, if you plan to leave your house at least one minute before you, you know, just leave a little bit early so you can drive a little bit slower.
Absolutely. Great point.
We have good success in Wilsonville, and we depend on everyone who lives here and visits here and works here to help make it stay that way. And thank you for what our planning department does with the, the program that I always called the wrong name. What is it? Concurrents?
Yes.
Oh.
Concurrent.
The city's code requirement. Yes.
Could you please, again, describe concurrency?
Of course.
Because that's something that, that is a little counterintuitive, but it's a really important policy of Wilsonville, and you're the best one to describe it.
Yes, yes. So in, in our development section of the development code, there's a chapter that refers to this concept of concurrency, and what it means is that we are providing the infrastructure that's necessary to serve development commensurate with the development happening or within a very short timeframe following the development happening. So if a intersection is triggered for a level of service issue, which is how we measure the flow of traffic throughout the community, we are going to prioritize a project and fix that intersection either before that development happens or within a certain period of time, consistent with the code and their various provisions for state highways to be fixed or for local streets to be fixed. So we follow the concurrency policies very closely in our land development process, and we utilize our five-year rolling CIP to prioritize transportation projects to bring those improvements to the community at the time that they're needed, not decades later. So it's a, an elegant concept, but there's a lot behind it, and it really does make a difference for how Wilsonville functions day-to-day with all the development that we do have.
And so this year, we're going to be coming through on one of those, and the CIP is the capital improvement project, or part of our budget, and we will be starting on a big project on the Beckman Dip because it is necessary due to the housing at Frog Pond.
Right.
So that's part of what our city does.
And another important concept, safe routes to schools, where we're trying to always think of where those future schools will be and make those connections from those neighborhoods that will be within the service boundaries of those various schools so that all the kids can have a very safe way to get to and from their house and to school. So it's another thing that we've been doing for many years.
Well, thanks very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Can I just add on that?
Please.
The other key thing to concurrency, planned and funded.
Yes, the, the devil is in the details.
Theoretically, everything is planned. It, it should be planned and funded within three years.
Right.
At least you have the plan in place and the funding stream in place.
Exactly.
Is the notion. So a lot of times, people get very panicked over, we can't have this development because the roads won't handle it, or the, this intersection's too busy or something. But concurrency is always working, you know, you, you couldn't have done Villebois with the streets that existed before Villebois was there.
Right, and we had to rebuild an interchange in order to accommodate the ultimate buildout.
And two bridges.
Right, right.
It was, it was a big.
So for our, our recent graduates, the Development Review Board is the body that spends time looking at developments and traffic impacts and making those decisions and working with us as staff on getting the concurrency in place. So, thank you.
And just want, to back up just one second, butt in here. As I look at this list of the walk cities, it looks like on the whole West Coast, California, Oregon, Washington, there's only two cities, us and Carvalis.
Wow.
Where was California? I don't know. Washington.
That's a can of worms.
They drive.
They drive.
They drive.
They drive. Yeah, well, we, we didn't expect it to be Los Angeles.
At least a little bit now.
Anyway, so a tremendous honor, when you look at the, the, look at it by state.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you.
So, and some of the fees that we talked about today that go along with building, all of these things are necessary in order to build the sidewalks, the walking trails. They don't happen magically.
You're absolutely right.
So thank you very much.
Mayor Fitzgerald, thank you, Council Leanne, members of council.
So that brings us to our citizen and community input announcement, and this is an opportunity for visitors to address the city council on items not on the agenda. It's also the time to address items that are on the agenda but are not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff in the city council will make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizen input before tonight's meeting ends or as quickly as possible thereafter. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have anyone to testify? Please.
Yes, you don't know who I am?
Very good.
My name's Jim Hensel. I'm, I live in Murray Landing. I submitted some written testimony as part of this. I have on a CERT vest. I, to borrow an America, slightly changed the name. I'm a CERT with no team. And I'd really like to encourage, the headline here is, I'd like to encourage the city to become a sponsoring agency for CERT. That's really an implementation issue for the city management, but it takes vision on the part of the, of the council to, to encourage that. I was a CERT in Portland for many, many years, as you can tell by my being part of the civic academy. I'm civically engaged and find CERT to be a way that I can be civically engaged. The CERT team that I was on in Portland, we did many things, more than just preparing for a Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake. We manned and womaned cooling and heating, warming shelters, and vaccination clinics, and testing clinics, and we took over for Portland Fire and Rescue on down power lines and, you know, just all sorts of stuff beyond just disaster. And I think that getting.
looking at developments and traffic impacts and making those decisions and working with us as staff on getting the concurrency in place. So thank you.
And just want to back up just one second, butt in here. As I look at this list of the walk cities, it looks like on the whole West Coast, California, Oregon, Washington, there's only two cities, us and Carvallos.
Wow.
Where was California? I don't know. Washington.
That's a can of worms.
They drive.
They drive.
They drive.
They drive, yeah. Well, we didn't expect it to be Los Angeles.
At least a little bit now.
Anyway, so tremendous honor when you look at the, look at it by state.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you.
And some of the fees that we talked about today that go along with building, all of these things are necessary in order to build the sidewalks, the walking trails. They don't happen magically.
You're absolutely right.
So thank you very much.
Mayor Fitzgerald, thank you, Council Lehan, members of council.
So that brings us to our citizen and community input announcement, and this is an opportunity for visitors to address the city council on items not on the agenda. It's also the time to address items that are on the agenda but are not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff in the city council will make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizen input before tonight's meeting ends or as quickly as possible thereafter. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have anyone to testify? Please.
You should know who I am.
Very good.
My name's Jim Hensel. I'm, I live in Murray Landing. I submitted some written testimony as part of this. I have on a CERT vest, I, to borrow an America, slightly changed the name, I'm a CERT with no team. And I'd really like to encourage, the headline here is, I'd like to encourage the city to become a sponsoring agency for CERT. That's really an implementation issue for the city management, but it takes vision on the part of the, of the council to encourage that. I was a CERT in Portland for many, many years, as you can tell by my being part of the civic academy, I'm civically engaged and find CERT to be a way that I can be civically engaged. The CERT team that I was on in Portland, we did many things, more than just preparing for a Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake. We manned and womaned cooling and heating, warming shelters, and vaccination clinics, and testing clinics. And we took over for Portland Fire and Rescue on down power lines and, you know, just all sorts of stuff beyond just disaster. And I think that getting Wilsonville prepared beyond the city website that describes, you know, all the things that citizens can do, I think we all know that most people are not prepared. And I found the engagement as a CERT in Portland, we were able to get our neighbors more engaged. And so I'm here really to encourage the city to fund an FTE that's focused on engaging citizens in Wilsonville for emergency preparedness. Any questions?
No, other than, I was very impressed with the detail that was in your letter, and it's, it was certainly very thought-provoking, and we'll discuss it more, I'm sure.
I also would like to make a comment. I live in Charbonneau, and I know you mentioned Charbonneau in your, in your note to the council. And we have quite an elaborate CERT program in place. So I do appreciate your comments and your bringing that to the attention of the council. I think some of the statements that you made in there in terms of some assumptions about how prepared our community are, really are, are relevant, even, I would say that even in Charbonneau, that, you know, we have a very good system, but I'll, but I would not guarantee that everyone is still prepared, our little red folders. And we found out in the ice storm that, you know, those were, they were prepared for, for an earthquake but weren't prepared for an ice storm. And, and we found that even though every single citizen in Charbonneau had the little sign that says, I'm okay, when the ice storm came, no one put their sign that said, I'm okay, on their, on their house. So it just really brought to mind how really more training and more preparation we need in order to do that. But I think your comments about city preparedness in terms of water, sewer, garbage, you know, essential services in the case of an emergency, I think are, are relevant as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your letter, and we will discuss it later. Now I see that we have Ms. Kerber on the Zoom here. Are you, is this for the next?
I just asked her to be available if there are any questions.
Okay, about this topic?
Yes.
Okay. So Ms. Kerber, can you, I did have a question. If you could talk about the, the current plan that, that you're working on regarding emergency preparedness, please.
Yes.
Add your title.
Hello, Delora, oh, sorry. Okay. Hi, Delora Kerber, Public Works Director and Emergency Management Coordinator for the City of Wilsonville. And so recently, the city council had developed various council goals, and one of them is the goal number six, which is to engage the community to support emergency preparedness and resilience. And there's two subsections to that. One is to work with our partners, and the second one is doing various outreach activities in order to help prepare our citizens. And I would agree that many of our citizens aren't as well-prepared as they should be. So we are doing various activities. One of them is information through the Bloomsbury Messenger as well as on the website. We also are scheduling an emergency preparedness fair for September 17th. More information to come for that. And then we have been reaching out to various community groups and sharing with them the two-week ready program. Other items that we are doing is some activities having to do with incentivizing people to be prepared and having prizes for them putting together a go-kit. Also, we're looking at doing some various, I'm trying to think what they are, they basically water bottles, not little bottles, I mean, big bottles that you would have for that. Also, we are looking at updating our emergency preparedness plan. So we have a lot of different things going on to really encourage and try to control and incentivize our citizens to be better prepared.
Thank you. Any questions? So we did have that as one of our council goals, and the, the emergency preparedness fair is coming up, so I think we can look to people to, this would be a good opportunity to remind your neighbors to come to that fair, get to know your neighbors, have them come to it, and we'll continue to see how this program rolls out. Thank you. So this brings us still in the citizen input and community announcements. We received a letter from Doris Whaler, and she is not here. It's actually addressed to, it says addressed to Mayor Fitzgerald and Councilors, City of Wilsonville, dated July 13th. And so I will read this letter, and then we will discuss it. The letter says, and it is from Doris Whaler of 6782 Southwest Whaler Way, Wilsonville, Oregon. Dear Mayor and Council, Councilors, attached to this letter are three petition pages containing approximately 40 signatures of West Frog Pond residents inquiring about our community park, which is a parcel, which, which a parcel is set aside, for which a parcel is set aside. The petition points out that our developer told us the city would develop the community park once 60 homes were complete. We are far in excess of that number now. There should be sufficient system development charges to pay to develop the park. We are requesting that the city, we're requesting the city to begin development of our park and provide regular communication with us as to its progress. You can communicate with us directly as we have provided our addresses. Alternatively, you can communicate directly with me, dawhaler@gmail.com, and I will relay your messages. Please read this letter into the record during public input at the July 18th, 2022 regular council meeting, and enter this letter and attached petition sheets into the city's record. Thank you for your attention to this matter. We hope to hear from you soon. And I will just read the wording on the petition, and the, the names are on the petition with all the addresses, and so I will be responding to all of these names directly, and I know the city manager will as well. What this says at the top of this petition is the, is the following. Petition to the City of Wilsonville from Frog Pond Residents, July 2022. We, all residents of Frog Pond West, have been waiting for development of our community park. When we bought our homes, we were told that when 60 homes were built, the park would be constructed. There are far more than 60 homes now. We are requesting that the city start developing our park, and please begin regular communication with residents about the progress. And then she again says that we, how we can respond. So with that, I would like to ask the city manager, and maybe you have a staff member, Mr. Namsoo here, to respond to this. Thank you.
As he's walking up, he'll summarize the email that I think I sent out to all of you that Mr. Namsoo sent to Ms. Whaler, so.
And I just wanted to add that I also will be communicating with them directly.
Okay.
Because the letter was addressed to me, and I just want to be really clear about how this works.
Okay.
Thank you.
So would you like me to read my response for the record? Absolutely. Sure. Good morning. I'm writing a response to your July 13th letter to city council regarding the status of the Frog Pond West Neighborhood Park. It's unfortunate that representatives of the home builders in the area made commitments to buyers that were not based on any city plans and not grounded in facts. This has happened more frequently than we would like, and always try to remind people to check directly with city staff regarding the timing of public infrastructure and amenities. When the Frog Pond West master plan was adopted, an infrastructure fee was created to fund five specific projects. The per-door fee was created in addition to SDCs, but was tailored specifically not to be an SDC, to fund specific projects that were needed for Frog Pond West. The first and most important project was the Beckman Road frontage to Frog Pond West and an associated sewer line. The next project was to purchase the neighborhood park site from the Westland-Wilsonville School District, followed by designing and building the park, then finally, construction of the full western half of Stafford Road adjacent to the project, to Frog Pond West. With the Beckman Road Corridor project being funded in the last budget cycle, approximately $22 million has been allocated to the project, including over $3 million from the Frog Pond infrastructure fee. The fund account balance will rebuild as additional homes are constructed. It's important to note significant investment in city parks' SDCs has been made for the first segments of the Beckman Creek Regional Trail, which is truly a unique community amenity, with more sections planned with future phases. Currently, the city is working with the school district to appraise the value of the neighborhood park property in preparation to acquire it. Staff is investigating utilization of Metro Park bond funds to possibly augment the infrastructure fee for this purchase. The city is coordinating with the school district on the design of the new primary school and plans to utilize the district's landscape architect team to seamlessly integrate the neighborhood park into the design of the larger school property. Design work is just getting underway with public project outreach occurring over the next several months, leading to final design and DRB city council review later this year, 2022, followed by construction, which would begin in spring of 2023, leading to the opening of a new state-of-the-art primary school facility with a beautiful new neighborhood park immediately adjacent. If you recall, the sites are immediately adjacent to one another. So the neighborhood park will seamlessly blend into the, kind of the playfield elements of the primary school, so it should feel much larger than a two-and-a-half-acre neighborhood park in isolation. The facilities will be designed together and integrated together, and the uses will be complementary to one another instead of being repeated, repeated again. So the goal is for the, the goal for this project is to work with the school district to plan and build the park at the same time as the school. There are many details to work through, but this approach should be the most efficient as far as time and cost. The tentative timeline for completion of both the school and the park is September 2024, when they plan on opening, and the Beckman Corridor project would be complete one month prior to September 2024. And come that timeframe, everything should be beautiful and incredible out there. So thank you for your inquiry. I'm happy to try to answer any additional questions that you might have regarding this project, and if you would please be so kind as to share this with your, with your neighbors, I would sincerely appreciate it. So I've actually had a number of meetings with the school district already. We have another one early next week to talk about the appraisal process. The appraiser will be coming to City Hall to talk to us about that. Price of land in the area, as you know, is, is not an insignificant amount. We have a preliminary appraisal that shows an acre of dirt in Frog Pond West is upwards of $650,000. So to purchase a two-and-a-half-acre site will require that fund and that infrastructure fee to build back up again now that we've spent basically the entire fund balance on the Beckman Road Corridor project. But the money that we are generating is adequate to cover these projects, and we have a game plan. We're moving forward. Outreach will be occurring this summer, some in conjunction with Mr. Polly and his Frog Pond East and South outreach on urban form and public realm. And we'll be getting a design together, and then we will be leading a process with neighbors, getting into the schools, and doing a wide variety of outreach regarding the design of that specific neighborhood park facility.
Thank you. I have a question. Can you, going back to the $22 million Beckman Dip project, which is going to be a really significant project, we're all going to notice it because we have to have detours, and it's that everybody's going to participate in being patient drivers, I hope, for something like a year and a half? And if it's on schedule, then the month after the $22 million Beckman Dip Road project is completed, if everything's on schedule, then this park would start. The, the part that confuses me, or doesn't confuse me, but I just don't get where it came from, it says a developer, which I don't know who the developer is, in this letter, in this, somebody wrote in this petition, some developer used a term of, a number of 60 homes. And how does that relate to what you described? Where did that come from?
I've never heard of the 60 homes. It's nothing that the city ever said publicly. It's, it's kind of a situation that we find ourselves in having to correct misstatements in the, in the field. We've had this happen repeatedly in Villebois over a lot of different phases where new marketing folks come in, they don't really know what the story is, and sometimes they make stuff up. So this is just another example of the developer who's unidentified. You know, in Street of Dreams alone, where Ms. Whaler lives, we had seven different developers, so, and they, they each built one house each. So I don't.
It could have been one of them.
It could have been one of them. You know, then you have two primary builders, and those two primary builders are now four primary builders. So I didn't get.
But there's no city document that says this.
No.
However, the city is building with the $22 million Beckman Dip Road project and then the, the project as we arrange the financing.
Correct. So we find ourselves chasing, chasing these misstatements frequently in the community, which is just frustrating.
Council Lehan.
Yes, I, I appreciate you saying that because I've, I've been through this many times also. And it's, but it's a good reminder for people when they're, well, when you're buying anything, really, but especially a major purchase like a piece of land or a house is, is, you just can't believe what the salesperson, everything the salesperson told you, or the developer told you, or the builder told you, this house will never fall down. I, I mean, or, or the roof, it has a lifetime guarantee. You, you need to check up on all these things because it isn't necessarily so. And certainly when they say, that property across the, across from you will never develop, never believe that.
Double check, double check.
Double check what, what it's zoned for and what the plans are, and it's just, it's just really important to not take somebody's word for it.
And so could, so if somebody has heard something like that, when they're considering buying a house, to really be sure it's going to happen, what would be the good next step?
A great thing is to consult our website. All of our adopted plans are on our website. That's a good place to do research and to kind of find information, if you like, surfing the internet, and you can always just call the city's community development department, ask for one of our city planners, who should know the story, and if they don't, they will move the question to the appropriate staff person for an appropriate and accurate answer.
Great, thank you. Counsel West.
How many people signed that petition?
Yeah, the, it says 40, approximately 40.
Probably 40. I mean, this might be an executive question, but like, it, something seems to be missing. Like, I feel really bad for these people. Promises made doesn't mean that we made that promise. I understand that. I mean, it can be our burden, but 40 people in the community really probably believe that that was something that was supposed to happen. Is there anything that the city can do to try to figure out, like, where that's?
That's what Pat just discussed.
But like, but is, are we, I know, but is there a way for us to, maybe it's, maybe, I don't know, I just feel bad that 40 people in this community are like saying, I thought this was owed to us, and us to say, oh, we never heard of it, we never said it. I mean, it doesn't seem super empathetic to something they really legitimately think happened. Is there a way for us to kind of help?
Well, I think the, the response is that, yes, you're going to get it, but it's not tied to any artificial 60 home that a developer promised you without talking to the city. It's always been the plan to buy that land from the school district. We have a, an agreement basically that they were holding that property for us, so we, we've always intended to buy it and to develop it jointly with their school out there. So it isn't a question of whether or not they're not going to get it. They're going to get it. It's just not on the timeline that maybe some of them have assumed.
Of 60 homes. Yeah, I, I just, I feel a little empathetic for their position, is all I'm saying. And 40 people, it seems like a significant amount. Like, one or two heard this, but that seems a lot of wool over somebody's eye, a lot of people's eyes.
I think we all share that empathy.
Yes.
But it's our job to give accurate information and, you know.
I guess it's they get.
I'm glad we, no, I'm glad we are, I'm glad you're clarifying. I'm just, there's a disconnect happening.
I think it's important also to, I, I, you know, like, I once bought a car that said it was going to be a great car. It was a used Toyota van, and I later called it a joke van because it, it had been wrecked and it had all kinds of problems. But that was on me because I didn't have it inspected. And, and this, I am very, it's very unfortunate that somebody, that, I guess, 40 people? I don't know. It's, it's sad.
Yeah.
It's unlikely that 40 people heard from a developer. A couple of people might have heard. A couple of people might have heard from a developer, or more likely a real estate agent, and they told their friends and their, or somebody went out and said, "Let's make a petition because I heard this, and don't you agree?" I don't think you had some single developer who went around to 40 different houses. There's not, there's not a single developer who does.
It could also be an unintended result of conversations.
Conversations.
Because as we hear, so what I think is also important for us to share with our citizen, Civics Academy people and our citizens, or, you know, people who have this kind of experience, is also share the word, spread the word, to go check, go to the city and find out. Because it has happened other places.
No, yeah, and I agree with that. I just, 40 seems like, you know, and you may be right, I'm just trying to understand how it gives you the discrepancy.
It was very prevalent in Vilbois.
And it was, and there was like a dog park thingy, and there was a lot, yeah.
The good news is, we have a plan, and we're going to be reaching out to the neighborhood. Several emails followed the one I sent to Ms. Weyler this morning. Good dialogue back and forth. There's a group of people that would really like to be a part of the park process, so I'll be getting those names. We'll be engaging directly with those that are interested. And again, the integration with the school district and the city, and you're going to see things happening. So I feel like the question was asked at a perfect time, and fortunately, we were moving in that direction, and everything will come together here.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Well, I'm glad that we, you know, some of the other background things to this are that are useful, that over the decades, we have had a history of working with the school district, and we have that concurrence policy, and despite ups and downs, it sounds like it's still going along. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I just wanted to make a comment that during my time of sitting on the Development Review Board, we did have the unfortunate opportunity to deal with a number of citizens regarding one of the parks that was adjoining the Wetlands area. And they were told by the developer that that property would never be developed in any way. And they came in numbers to the DRB, just terribly upset because their homes, many of them fronted that area, and they couldn't imagine having a park and vehicles parked along there. And so when you say, you know, it's heartbreaking, it is heartbreaking. And it's very unfortunate that we have citizens in our community that find themselves in that position, where they're told something, and it is not, and it is not, in fact, what is the plan and what is going to happen. So I appreciate how you feel. I appreciate that we have citizens that are upset about that, however they got the information. And I suspect it's probably a little bit of both, maybe, a little bit from a developer and a little bit from, you know, concerned citizens having conversations with each other. So I appreciate your response and working with them, and I think anything that we can do to set it correct is going to be helpful, so.
Okay, well, it sounds like there's continuing good dialogue, and I'm glad that this was brought up, so that, I'm glad that we got the letter because we were able to respond.
Yes.
I'm not glad that it happened. And that the misinformation, you know, went along as far as it did. But hopefully, word will spread to check out those Emerald City promises.
That's right. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. So that brings us to councillor comments, liaison reports, and meeting announcements, starting with councillor Lehan.
I really don't have anything significant this evening. I have been to the Lam Falls and Landings Heritage Area Coalition and the Management and Operations Committee that I serve on, and was, oh, I was recently made vice president of that organization, but against a great number of objections from me. But anyway, but otherwise, I will pass this evening.
Thank you. Councillor West.
Yeah, I, a ton of significant things to report. I enjoyed the Fourth of July holiday, and we had a little bit of a break this month in our meetings, which was nice. I had a really unique opportunity to be a guest of Sandy's mayor, Stan Polium. They have their big Sandy Mountain Festival. It's a multi-day event, starts with a parade and it goes all weekend. And so I got a chance for him to just kind of show me that community, show me a little bit how their city works, walk through me like, this is what we do with our ARPA funds, this is how we were innovative and a little bit different. So that was really a great learning opportunity that I had from another regional city. And I loved, like, just kind of like, oh, and you always, when you represent Wilson, you're like, oh, we do that better, or we could do something like that, or, you know, it just gets those wheels of creativity flowing when you have the chance to collaborate with other local electeds. And so I really appreciated that. I had the same opportunity a little bit with Estacada's mayor, Sean Drinkwine. They had me out there. We went, they have this amazing food truck location, and we hear about that all the time, and we have the good, the bad, with the different food trucks. We have that debate a little bit, like, how would we do that here? And I know we talked about food options in Wilsonville. Some people think we're a little bit of food desert. And seeing some innovative ways that they did it in Estacada, once again, was one of those opportunities, like, okay, I know that we might be interested in maybe something similar here, maybe when that topic comes up again, it gives a little bit of background. So I got a chance to kind of just collaborate that way and learn a little bit more, and I appreciated that. So that's what I spent the last couple of weeks doing, because it's kind of parade festival season as it is, so, yeah. So that's what I did.
Great, thank you. Councillor Linville.
I also don't have much to report. I was out of the country for the first, since, pretty much since our last meeting. So, and fortunately, did not get COVID, and I was very thankful about that. I will be attending the C4 Metro Subcommittee meeting this week on the 20th, and I am certain that the tolling amendment will be part of our discussion. I have not seen an agenda yet for that meeting. But I really wanted to encourage not only our Charbonneau citizens, but all of our Wilsonville citizens to respond to the public input on that Goal Six tolling amendment, and for us to make it easy, as easy as possible, for that public comment to be made. I think disenfranchising a portion of our community by putting that tolling, that tolling gantry in between our city, the, you know, portions of our city, actually, and it is just unconscionable. And I've mentioned numerous times when we've had discussions about the Boone Bridge and the traffic on the Boone Bridge. If you had to go on the Boone Bridge just to go to the grocery store, it would become a more important issue to you, and that has, that's what happens with those 3,000 of our citizens that live in Charbonneau. They have to go on I-5 to get to city services. And otherwise, we're sending everybody to Canby, and I don't think that's what we want to do. So I think it takes our entire city to really get engaged and involved in making that and not just being the Charbonneau citizens that are impacted. So I'm hopeful that we can encourage everyone to respond to that. Thank you.
I think of another thing. Yes, I meant to say this earlier about the tolling. I'm also having allergies here. I've taken many COVID tests, and they're all negative. But with regard to tolling, I think we need to keep in mind that it isn't pro or con of tolling, it's how it's done. And tolling in the future will be not driving through a toll gate. It's going to be a thing on your car, and you'll get a bill at the end of the month. And because every car is registered to an address and to a person, they can tailor it. So they would have the ability, for instance, to exempt all Charbonneau addresses, so that they would not be told for that section, or maybe the whole section, I don't know. Or a particular person who could, who is, who has to work and is low income, or whatever. They can, you could have, their car could be excluded, or they could exclude them by address for where those cars are registered. So it's not a matter of your for tolling or against tolling, it's how the tolling is done for the various different impacted groups. Time of day, it can be for, you know, obviously, time of day, how people are, where they're going from, and to, certainly where the car is registered. All those things are possible to do now in the electronic age.
And if I could just respond to that, I think we also have businesses that are in the Charbonneau area, and our Wilsonville citizens also visit those. And that's an economic viability issue for people coming from, you know, from the north of the Boone Bridge to the south. So I guess, you know, I think it's probably an entire city issue.
I, yeah, I'll just jump in. I totally agree with everything that was said. I just think it's one more to the long list of why tolling's a bone doggle in this region and why Clackamas County and most of these suburban communities think it's just a bad idea. This is, I think tolling in this region disproportionately impacts Wilsonville, and yeah, I just, I concur to everything that was said, but this is not going to improve the livability of our community, and it hurts Wilsonville.
Well, if I could add to that, I think that I have, I welcome you to come to some of the meetings where we discuss this. They're usually two, two-and-a-half hours long.
I appreciate that, and I've studied extensively, the tolling issue, but I think it's bad for Wilsonville and Clackamas County.
And also, I'm not disagreeing with that, it's just the residents around Wes Lynn have the same, you know, issue we're talking about here. They're concerned about tolling starting there while other segments of the metropolitan area will later be told. So all of this is being discussed over and over and over. And today at a meeting I went to, I mean, it's one, today at a meeting I went to, one of the mayors from another part, another county, suggested that because there's not another form of money that the legislature identified to pay for this, that perhaps an income tax would be the way to pay for it. So there are just, you know, we are, we're not, these are things that people can comment on, on the website, or the comment period. This is really an important time to write those comments and suggest alternatives and really get people who you know who want to have those comments in the record.
I agree, and there are alternatives that don't involve an income tax or tolling to help fund infrastructure. There are other policy ideas, they should be heard. And I just, as a local elected, as somebody who lives here, I'm super concerned about this policy. That just seems like it's being steamrolled through, and I know a lot of local communities around here are really concerned about it.
Right, that's, and there are still unknowns about how, you know, the price has not been revealed, there are many different steps to be considered. And the ideas that you have for alternative funding, I think those would be good for you, for anyone who has those ideas to put into the public comment.
Mayor, may I ask you a question at your meetings? I know that there's been discussion about tolling gantries placed on 205 and on the south end of I-5. I think that they have eliminated the Rose Quarter, at least at this point, I think. But my question is, and they're talking about using the tolling money to fund bridge development, building, rebuilding, restructuring. Why has there not been discussion about the interstate bridge and tolling at the interstate bridge?
Oh, there has been. There has been part of all the discussions for the last couple of years.
But it's not in this implementation.
Not for this timing, but it's all part of that discussion, and you can, and the tolling, if you, you know, the tolling area that is under discussion by the, by ODOT and the Oregon Transportation Commission goes, you know, it starts with the metropolitan area, and it would go onto the west side, it would go far, you know, into many other areas. And as another mayor said at the meeting today, that the Oregon Transportation Commission or the Oregon, the ODOT policy for tolling, the amendment that's being looked at, is for the whole state of Oregon. So again, this is, we're talking about this zip code and right here, but it's the whole state.
We could just toll all the big rigs from out of state, and we'd make out like bandits because, because that's who's, between 205 and south of the Boone Bridge, we are rolling way more big trucks than the CRC ever thought of.
I would say one more thing that I would really request for anybody who's making a comment. If you can add, while you're taking your time to make a comment, add the importance of a southbound auxiliary lane on the Boone Bridge.
Absolutely.
Because that is in jeopardy.
And much of this tolling doesn't increase capacity, but we get the privilege to pay, again, for freeways that we've already paid for with no increased capacity. And there you go, that's in jeopardy. It's just like a long list of failures that hurt Wilsonville, like, over and over again since the start of this.
All right, so that was a fun councillor comments, but it was, it was important, and it really is, as councillor Linville keeps saying, this is the time to go make those, make some comments during the comment period. And I'll make sure that we have a link visible on our website. Will the, we're now moving to the consent agenda. Will the city attorney please read the consent agenda?
Resolution number 2987, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute the Tri-County Metropolitan Transportation District of Oregon, TriMet, subrecipient agreement, and minutes of the June 2022 city council meeting.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Your honor, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
And I will second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded, all in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. Moving to new business, will the city attorney please read the resolution title?
Resolution number 2979, a resolution of the city council adopting the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, DEI, committee strategic plan.
Welcoming Ms. Monbert to introduce the DEI committee strategic plan.
Wonderful, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Zoe Monbert, Assistant to the City Manager, and this evening I have the pleasure of sharing with you Resolution 2979, which will adopt the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee Strategic Plan. Some of the background information this evening might sound familiar, as we discussed this at your work session in June with Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, or DEI, committee chair Imran Hyder, and our DEI consultant, Bill De La Cruz. At that time, they walked you through a bit of our background. So this committee has actually been operational, if you will, for a year. They started up in July of 2021, and now 2022, we have been able to develop their mission and vision, which was complete in December of 2021. And over the past few months, they've been focusing on their strategic plan in order to make it- In order to make it a more efficient process, there was a subcommittee that was formed out of the DEI committee. In addition to their work, there were focus groups as well as community surveys to gather information from the community to provide input into what this actual document would look like. And the document is in your packet, we'll walk through briefly just a few of the objectives. So these are the three objectives that are focused on in the plan. Within each of these areas, there are actions. The actions are the elements that the DEI committee is going to focus on over the next few years. And those include things such as lecture series, identifying and compiling best practices for city departments and developing consistency, providing recommendations on meeting and event accessibility, providing recommendations on producing bilingual materials, developing a cultural calendar, visual representation, collaborating with not only other city departments, city boards, as well as other cities and school districts. When we shared those, the plan with you at the work session, there are a few items that came out of it that the council had expressed some interest in, and those, we're going to walk through those two specific areas. One item was the importance of sharing community members' stories. This is something that was stressed and we believe that this is fulfilled within Objective Two in the action, highlight, share perspectives of community members and tie into monthly themes, interviews and columns. This is actually one of the areas that we've been able to slowly start to incorporate into our Boones Ferry Messenger and we certainly want to go further in how we share information and share stories of our community members with other community members. And the other item was recognizing our cultural heritage based on the discussion that the council had. So we've tied that in to Objective Three and the action item is currently stated as acknowledge and recognize our multicultural heritage, including the Kalapua natives, German and Greek settlers and Chinese laborers. I'll also note on this that the committee is already planning to meet with the Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee as there is likely going to be some overlap in their work, so they're planning to have a joint meeting in October. So that will be after the DEI committee starts prioritizing. So our next steps, once we receive the council's approval, will be to prioritize these actions. Depending on how, you know, which items they pick and how long it takes for us to make those actions move, some of them will be ongoing actions, some of them will be items that they complete and then we move to the next one. So hopefully this will provide their action strategies for the next few years to come. I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns that you may have. And then you do have a motion on your screen, should you choose to approve that this evening.
Thank you, councillor Lehan.
What did I say?
Oh, I just see, for once I see this light.
No, I didn't have a question. I do think they've done an excellent job though.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Do we have a discussion?
Oh.
Okay.
Okay.
Your Honor, I move to approve.
Excuse me just a minute. No, before, so we did, we, yes. Let's do, let's take the motion, thank you.
I move to approve Resolution number 2979. Is that what it is? Yeah, 2979.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Thank you, sorry.
No, no problem. I, I really appreciate the work that the committee did. I spent a lot of extra time with our consultant, understanding the influences that impacted kind of the framework that we're using. And I've, I'm really comfortable with the framework that our consultant is using, this whole like human dignity about like allowing people to feel like they belong within a community is kind of that framework that we're using, this, this like, he says inclusion of belonging, that's what, that's what it is, yeah. So inclusion of belonging and how people can feel like they can participate in their community in a more full extent, I think is really healthy. And some of the more controversial worldviews that impact some of this type of work is not really the framework that we used as a city or that, that our consultant approached. So I feel like this is something that the majority of our citizens can get behind and feel good about.
Thank you. Okay.
I agree.
I do have some comments from council president Akarbal that she sent in that I would like to read. She apologizes for not being able to be here tonight and even though she wasn't able to be here, she wanted to send this statement in advance to share her support for Resolution number 2979. Council president Akarbal says, "I appreciate the DEI's committee work in putting the proposed strategic plan together and also the community members that provided valuable input during focus groups, surveys and feedback sessions. Your contribution will lead the way for a stronger community and I want to express my deep gratitude. I look forward to the growing momentum and the continuation of work of the DEI committee and many others in Wilsonville. These actions will make our love city more inclusive, welcoming, innovative and productive. I look forward to the development of deeper trust, increased engagement and improved access and know it will benefit Wilsonville and all community members. I urge my fellow council members to support the adoption of this resolution, Resolution number 2979. Thank you and have a great meeting." Kristen Akarbal. So we have that. And then I would just add that I also really appreciate the work of this committee. We had 45 people who applied to be on this committee and councillor Lehan and I, along with our consultant, Bill De La Cruz, interviewed more than half of them. And that was, there was really, we heard great stories, very impactful stories. And I think we're just really lucky to have people in Wilsonville who are willing to take time and apply for things and we, you know, we have 13 spots on that committee and the people are really participating. So I really appreciate that and, and I think councillor, you know, West and council president Akarbal both made some really good comments that I appreciate.
I, I just wanted to remind us that this is kind of a monumental item. This, if you go back to, I believe it was January of 20, was it 20 or 21, when we first started having discussions about the need for this commission or committee and to now be at the place where we not only have a really active group, we have engaged citizens, but we also, we also have a strategic plan. So I, I commend the, the council as well as the staff and our citizens for bringing this to fruition. So thank you.
Thank you.
I would just add that I, my contribution to this was I removed the French settlers in our history and added the Greeks. Because that's where we got volajos.
Ah.
Didn't know that's Greek. Volajos drive.
Well, thank you councillor Lehan and, and everybody who participated in getting it to this point and Ms. Monbert, Mr. Cosgrove for, for supporting that and all of our staff because you're all, all of our staff are going to be involved on a day-to-day basis in looking at this and checking in with it and, and just, you know, doing, doing everything they can to make sure that we're, I think, looking at that, looking at that plan and just reflecting because some of these improvements and enhancements to our quality of life that are going to come about because of this will take effort and continued effort. So with that, I would like to call for a vote of this resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you voting?
Aye.
Yes.
The motion passes 4-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Town center part, yeah, at town center.
And thank you, Ms. Monbert, for all of your work in leading that project.
She did a great job.
Are we, are we done?
Do we have any city manager business?
Yes, I'm, I'm adding to it as I speak here.
Okay.
Someone else is helping me add to it. Real quickly, I just want to give you a couple of updates on two positions that I know council is keenly aware of and it's also related to council goals. So the arts and culture program coordinator is active recruitment. And Gina, when does that close? Do you know?
It was posted on Sunday, I think it closes in three weeks.
So when we get that position filled, we will introduce that new employee to you so that they can do the work of that committee as well. The behavioral health position is also, has been active for a while and there's been some challenges, but I understand as of this morning, we may have a really good applicant that has applied and I think we're trying to schedule interviews.
Mid-August.
Mid-August. So I know that's longer than what any of us thought it would be, but can't make people apply for, for a position.
Is that just one applicant the whole time?
It only takes one good one, councillor.
It's just, okay.
And then the last thing is I was taking notes about the desire to push out the tolling stuff, Mayor, and we will get that on the TV, we'll provide that link, we will put it front and center on our website, push it out on Twitter and Facebook for all the people that follow the city.
Thank you, and I think it would be useful to post a copy of the letters that we've been sending so they, the, the people can see what we've been saying about this.
Yes, we'll do that. And then lastly, so that councillor Linville doesn't get mad before I go on vacation, you are cordially invited to the rotary concert Johnny Limbo and the Lug Nuts. There's a, there's a pre-funk, I guess, in our Park and Rec building that you were all invited to. So I would, I would, there will not be any alcohol, however, but I would totally encourage you all to attend because Johnny Limbo is, if you haven't seen.
Amanda just saw liability, liability, liability.
I said that there would be none, just to be clear. That's all I have, Mayor, thanks.
Thank you. And do we have any legal business?
None tonight, Mayor, thank you.
I think that brings us to the end of our meeting. Thank you, everyone. The meeting is adjourned at 8:33 PM.
I had a schedule. It was 8:50.
Goodbye.
Yeah, well, thanks for being.